Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I stand. I pray. Lord, thank you for giving us our help to come to another meeting. Pray that everything we do today will be in the best interest of the county and the people. Pray that you'll watch over our police force, please watch over our EMS, and watch over our fire department, and watch over the county. Thank you for all the people here that's trying to do the business of the county, that you'll give them the wisdom and knowledge to do their best, for we ask to all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wilson, can I get a roll call?
Yes.
District One, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District Two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District Three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District Four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District Five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District Six, Chris Manus.
Here.
And at-large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a question? Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions that we need to make, any modifications of any story? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I like that motion.
Michelle makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Danny, I'll give that one to you. Danny Castile, seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda has been approved. Does anyone have a chance to read over the minutes from last meeting, from July 2nd, 2025? Are there any changes, deletions, modifications that we should make to that? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as they stand?
Some may.
All right. Ms. Stephanie moves. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
No, I think Danny.
All right. I'll give Danny the second on that one, too. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Getting into citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting where anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and what organization, correct what you say. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. We have a five-minute timer in effect for the comment. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Also, there are two separate public hearings that are happening today, one for Freely Town Road and one for ordinance. This public expression is just for general issues and not specific to those. So if you've got issues specific to those two public hearings, we will have separate public expression for those. Does anyone have any general?
I would like to speak.
Okay.
My name is Charles Larry Williams, and I'm property in the Freely Town area. I also own property along 624 on the south side of the bridge. We're talking about abandoning today.
Mr. Chairman, is it that you have a question?
Marking.
Yes. If this is specific to the bridge, can you wait till the public hearing for that section? We're not to...
Yes, yes, I'm here to talk about that.
Okay.
And I'm opposed to the abandonment of that bridge. First of all, that road has served the Freely Town and the community there in the Duffield area for over 100 years, and that bridge has been there. I grew up right by the Freely Town Road, spent a lot of time going up and down that road. I know some of my good neighbors have issues about the road, the bridge, and that being open to two-way traffic. I just got off the phone with Darrell Simpson from the Virginia Department of Transportation. I put in a request earlier for someone from VDOT to give me a call and update me on the status of that bridge and what was going to happen. For the ones, the members here that don't know, Virginia has approved funding to replace that bridge, and there's a lot of people in the Duffield area, Freely Town area, Purchase Ridge area, the whole community think that we are at the bottom of the food chain when it comes to funding. So I think it would be a disservice to abandon that bridge and really close that bridge to two-way traffic. Could I have the map?
Sir, there's going to be a public hearing about this after citizens' expression that will give you time to speak.
Oh, okay. I thought this was it.
No, this is not that.
Okay. I apologize.
Very next thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have been more clear about that.
Okay, no problem. We'll get...
Well, I'll give you your turn here and say.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Ms. Peggy Tice.
Good morning. I'm Peggy Tice from Snowflake Road and all dirt roads in Scott County. There are dirt roads in Scott County, 252 miles of them, and I had to give the Lee County Tree Service an A+ on removing the bushes and the trees on Snowflake Road. I mean, it is, they did a great job, but now the dirt roads are sealed with the rain. We had them had to deal with the dust, but we've had to deal with the ditches in the middle of the road and holes, potholes, and all that. And I want to thank VDOT for patching that hole at Addington Frame. I mean, it was a hole and if you didn't see it, but... And we need to get Terry Gilmore to get more money awarded for dirt roads and for the 252 miles, and if he had to drive over them roads every day, I'd say there would be something done. And we might also need to get Griffin, Pillion, Yonka, all of them involved in this to get more money for dirt roads, because that's 252 miles in Scott County. That's... And then another thing on the Riverside, delayed again, you know, we can't, nothing happening over there, so... And that hurts the taxpayers in Scott County, so something needs to be on the Riverside properties, needs to be done, something in Scott County. And I want to thank you all for all that you all do for us and the six-year plan. I want to keep Snowflake Road on it, but we've been on it for years and years and years, and I hope when it comes up here, I believe in 2028, I hope we got money. We've been told for years and years and years, since I've been keeping records since 97, no money, 1997. So I hope we can keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan and that we have money. Thank you all. You all have a good day.
I live on 58th and New Bedford Road, and that's what we'd everybody know. After three years of paving and cleaning, I finally got the breast cut back on the road at Farquhar's, figuring on them curbs. We all know that VDOT is a major overhaul, but it goes to vision, has to be on this. And I want to personally thank Stephanie. I wouldn't have to last meeting, but during meeting, I told her my problem, I couldn't figure on them curbs and brush beating vehicles off of vehicles. Obviously later she brought me a work order, and within a week I saw action. Thank you, Stephanie. Take care with it.
Gary Baker, Boozer Creek. Chris, you're doing a good job, and I wanted to congratulate Mr. Wilson on his new job. And I've got a little bit of things to say about VDOT. I want to thank them for paving a two-mile road on Boozer Creek from the state line, Tennessee State Line, from the Peacemakers home up to Timbertree Branch Road, maybe a little bit more than two miles. And the only thing I'd say they done wrong, they paved it, but they didn't clean out the side ditches. They already got permission to do it. But anyway, I went down the road Monday, and some guy moved in here from somewhere else, Tennessee or somewhere, all the big property down there, and he's grinning in one of them little bobcats escalators. He cleaned up his ditches and laid it on the side of the road. But now I don't know if it's still there or not, but I wish he went all the way up and down the road and got them all cleaned out. But anyway, VDOT has done a good job with what they've got to work with. I'd like for Michelle and Stephanie to come up and look at Buller Chapel Road.
Every time it rains, it washes away.
And the preacher up there called them about a week ago, VDOT, and he left it out the next day. But they sent a tractor up there with a grinder blade and raded it all up. Oh, it's beautiful. Couple days later, coming out of the rain, now it's gone. If they had just cleaned out their ditches and their tiles, they got it up. And anyway, I want you all to come up, write you some work orders on that. You all need to look at this, all the way up that road, and you can't all get up to this church. And it's a good road, but it just washes away. But they won't clean out the ditches at all, and they had a machine a hundred yards away over on me. So anyway, to make a long story short, the best thing to do with VDOT, I don't think Terry can do a hill of beans, best thing to do with VDOT is to see the two ladies that are running for governor. Light them, see them, talk to them, and ask them to reinstate VDOT the way it was back prior to 2009, where we had to hail the equipment and the offices to take care of their county. And they might accidentally restore it. I know the previous governor in 2009 took away $2.2 billion away from them, and they had to lay off everybody. Now, you can see, all you have to do is drive, look down these dirt roads and also the blacktop road. Anyway, get off of that. The thing I wanted to ask was, what's the county expect is going to happen when the Department of Education is shut down? All that money's probably going to come back to the states for the time being, and don't you think Tennessee might accidentally be asking for all their students back because they'd be losing money if that works out like that? I'm not up on all this stuff, but it's something to think about. And you might accidentally get a line item, what they spend on line items and long-range forecast now, if it happens, which I think it already is now. And I'm down all the time, Chris. I'm used about the whole outfit. Good to see you all. You all doing a great job, and congratulations, young man.
Thank you. Thank you. Who do you want?
Good morning.
Guys, I'm here at Kepa Barnet, I live at 116 Window Road in K-City, and I'm here just wanting to represent the Scott County Ministry Association Food Pantry. I don't know if any of you are aware, but we're struggling financially currently. Pre-COVID, we were funded by churches and organizations that provided finances for us to pay electric bill, insurance, all those such things, and we built up a little bit of a cushion. When COVID happened, a lot of those small churches went under. They don't exist anymore, and our funding went away. But we've been coasting for a while on that money. But now we've come to a point where we had to have a decision made if we were going to seek help or if we're going to cut down, you know, the ministry and not do food anymore and help these folks. And I had some numbers here that I wanted to read you guys. Monthly, the pantry association feeds around 700 people in the camp. Forty-six percent of those are elderly, and 27% of those are children. We consistently feed that number every single month. Those people come back, and those are folks that are on fixed income. They're disabled, retired. They're not going to go out here and get a job because they're not able to do that. There's assistance that we need to continually provide. And our electric bill each month, I think it's around $500 or more, depending on what the AP charges. We have a nine-foot-by-nine-foot walk-in freezer and 12-14-foot walk-in cooler, as well as some floor freezers and other things that we run. Those things operate 24/7. Those are commercial units. We need that to keep the food cool and frozen so we can route it to the community. Now, we've been in operation for right at 20 years, and we're a total volunteer organization. We don't have any employees. We don't pay salaries or any of that stuff. So the money does go back into the community, and we need help. We have a little bit of money left, and we can route out, I think, for another six months if we're lucky, depending on what we get. But here's the thing, with the way the government is right now and the sanctions and stuff on food, the USDA is seeing cuts come down. Now, we work with Feeding Southwest Virginia up in Addington. I'm a member of their advisory council. We had a meeting the other day. Hope Christian Ministries, which was operating in Duffield, been there for 11 years, provided a food pantry, so they closed down. They don't exist anymore. They had to close down that feeding operation. They're still trying to do kids' food and that sort of thing, but that's going to impact our numbers as well. So there's needs out there, and with the cuts, the USDA part of it, we don't have to pay for the food that's provided by the government, it's shrinking. So to fill that gap, we have to purchase more food to make sure that the family's getting what they need each month, which is high cost for us. One of the trucks that we paid for the other day was $4,000 for one month for food for these families. And I'm here today to see if you guys can help light my bird a little bit financially. If you guys could contribute, say $1,000, it would help us, and that's what I'm here for today. Are there any questions?
I do have a question for you. Yes, sir. Are you working any with Appalachian Harvest Food Bank in Duffield?
We refer people to them. We don't work directly with them. They have their own feeding program where they do the boxes each month. I know they work with First Baptist and again, and they do provide those boxes for families, but it's not enough food to see those families through each month. So when people come to us, I tell them, it's like, guys, we'll provide you with the USDA food, we'll give you the food that we purchased and stuff, and if you all don't have enough, please visit these other places. I send them to Appalachian Harvest. I send them anywhere they can get food, because just any one organization, we can't afford to feed a whole family for the whole month continually. Any other questions?
Any other question? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sheriff Jeffy, Scott County Sheriff's Office. Today, it's, I'm going to give you our Q, our first quarter stats for 2025. The Scott County Dispatch received a total of 12,333 calls for the first quarter of 2025. Of these calls received, we received, the Sheriff's Office, 2,523 of these calls were dispatched to us. The total number of domestic calls and deputy orders we had was 51. Criminal papers served was 635, with 379 felonies, 256 misdemeanors. Included are 43 drug-related cases and six DUI-related cases. Also, the sheriff's deputies issued 286 traffic summonses and were dispatched to 75 motor vehicle accidents. Deputies served 1,044 civil process papers. They were 414 IVR incident-based reports completed with 86 active, 15 marked unactive, and 133 closed arrests. Sheriff's Office court security deputies provided 344 hours of courtroom security, 456 hours of front door entrance security. Also, the Sheriff's Office conducted 15 traffic checkpoints. Deputies did 84 out-of-state extraditions that traveled 7,034 miles. Also, deputies provided two in-state transports. Sheriff's Office provided 169 concealed carry permits, also processed 199 fingerprints. The deputies responded to 47 calls to motor vehicles. That's quite a few. They do a good job. We're busy with something daily. It's just, it's just hard to imagine how, it's gotten busier the last little bit, so I hope it slows down some. But any questions or any, about any of these stats or anything I can help you with?
Are you going to be able to say for the hearing with Freely Town Road, there is an issue with drug-related activity on that road? Or would you like to make comments now about it?
I'm not sure we've had any. Have you seen anything about Freely Road, drug activity? I'll have to check back, sure. We'd have to do some checking, see if we've had those calls or something there.
The other thing, the accreditation that you're in the process of doing, can you add to us on that?
We're, hopefully by April next year, we had an assessor came in and looked at everything and gave us what we needed to do and what we have to do, so we're moving in the right direction. We got the people in the right places now that follow through with that, so it's going well. It looks promising, so... But we also have, I think there's a grant, a grant that, no cost to the county, that's going to help us establish that also. It's going well, so, good Lord willing, it'll all happen, so... Anybody else?
Jeff, did you get a call Monday night about Freely Town Road down there?
Monday night?
Yeah, I think it's Monday or it might have been Tuesday. No, it's Monday.
I don't remember one.
I, as a gentleman, called me, and he said that he called it in, and I heard a couple complaints over the last few months about it down there, and...
I said, we're going to have to check and see what the dispatch received and all of that, so I'm not sure. I haven't heard of any major down there, so I don't want to guess. We may have, but I don't...
Well, what I heard about it, that there used to be down there when it was open, one would come one way and one would come the other, and they swap drugs. Instead, now they're down there partying or taking drugs down there.
If you're going to do that, do all the roads in Scott County. Y'all just picking out Freely Town, it ain't happening. Go see for yourselves. That don't happen.
I'm just telling you...
I know. You're just saying what you've heard, but I'm just telling you, I live there, I know what goes on. If you want to do something on the drugs, then I'll probably shut down the bunker road, but you won't, because hoods aren't about that. We're going to give in, and we'll give in.
I don't want any. I'm not into drug business.
I know. Everybody's wanting to say that now. The guy that lives there in the White House had an episode back about three or four years ago where the guy'd come in his house, if you remember, he was a little lame fellow. But now that, you can't use that, keep using that, you know?
I don't even know the guy you're talking about, so I'm not using it at all.
Let's save this discussion for the public expression on Freely Town Road, if you don't mind, and keep your comments to the sheriff.
Like I said, I don't even know who that guy is or White House or nothing.
I know, but...
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Is anybody for general public expression? Anybody else?
We'll close general public expression, and there are a couple things before we can say.
I was going to cover some things from last meeting. Did you want to cover something?
The only request that we got through there that we can do anything about is Mr. Kepa Barnet's. I want to make sure that we address that if we could today. He is asking for $1,000, it sounds like. Does the board have any opinions, thoughts on that? A motion?
Well, I will say that if we do it, one, we need to do it for all.
For all the food organizations?
Yes.
What other, I mean, besides Appalachian Harvest?
I don't know that they're organized as much as this one is, but the Meals of Love in Nicholsville, they're up once per week. They serve meals to homes.
What I would request, if they come and ask.
Yes. But I'm just saying for future requests, if we do it for one...
It's noted.
Meals for love?
Meals of love.
Meals of love, okay, not for love. Sorry.
I'll second that motion, Darrell.
Yes, from contingency.
Yes, from contingency.
From contingency, all right. We have a motion up by Darrell and a second by Stephanie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for that.
Okay. I'd like to cover things from previous meetings that we didn't maybe get a solution for. Ms. Tice, you had asked about your road being on the six-year plan. It is on your schedule for about four years, so you are on the six-year plan projected to start in four years. Questions are being asked about Riverside development. I do have some information on that that I can share. The daycare center, senior living center, workforce housing has been delayed. There has been a change in engineers, engineering firms on that project. There are meetings scheduled with EDA and those firms this month, so we should have something updated, I think, next month on that.
I would just like to say, too, on that, not only is there a change in engineers, but the planning commission actually asked them to go back and change some of their plans on that to better suit workforce housing. So, you know, it's a little bit of our fault on that, or not our fault directly as the board, but county government's fault for delaying that a little bit.
The next item is another proposed possible project in the River City area, and there has been some delays due to family illness with that, and we should hear something more on that in August. You had asked about the funding for the rural roads. I think, Mr. Wilson, you're going to cover your invitation.
Right.
You'll be covering that later in the meeting.
Correct.
So he has sent an invitation out to Delegate Gilmore and Pillion, Senator Pillion, and he'll be covering that a little bit later. The VDOT, a couple things that are mentioned over in Hilton's area I was going to cover later, but Mr. Sumter did mention that with VDOT, ditching operations are underway on Boozer Creek, and they're moving to AP Carter Highway next with the ditching. The Boomax, which covers the higher brush, operations are being conducted in Babe, Stanley Town, and also bus routes are being looked at. And I'll cover some more stuff under VDOT, but I just wanted to address your questions on that. That's all I have.
Yeah, VDOT's been taking care of some ditches and running clear, cutting down paths as far as the Duffield office is going, so... All right. Is there any additional items that we would want to take out citizens' expression? All right. We'll move on to the public hearing, and first is the public hearing for a considered proposed road abandonment of a section of Route 624 Freely Town from 0.67 miles east of Route 683 Purchase Ridge Road to 0.66 miles south of Route 621 Jan Lane, a distance of 0.17 miles. miles. And we will open the public hearing for that, if you would love to speak on, either way on the Frehley Town Road, please, if not, then...
Good morning. I apologize for putting the wagon before the horse at this point.
We're glad we got it straightened out.
We got it straightened out. First of all, I live in the Frehley Town community. I live right off of Highway 58. I have access down the valley, I own property down the valley along Jay Road Lane. I also own property across North Fork of the Holston River. I lived and I grew up along Highway 624, the Frehley Town Highway. I've spent many miles up and down that road. I understand the concern that people have about the road, closing the bridge, their issues they have with safety, they have issues with the dust, because part of the road is unpaved from Janon Lane down toward the road intersects with Highway 638. Few minutes before this meeting started, I received a call from Alan Sumter, who is from the Blas, Virginia Department of Transportation, and he was giving me an update on what was going on this with the road. I have spoke with numerous people in the Frehley Town community and in the Dustfield area. There's a big concern that people have that relating to closing this bridge. There's a safety concern. Fire and EMS has a concern, because that road can be used as an alternate route to get to the Purchase Ridge area, to get to the Red Hill area, in case the road at Pattensville is blocked and prevents people that live off of 638 from accessing their property. Could we bring that map up? Could you point where 624 starts? Frehley Town Road? And where it intersects? Okay, it starts there. If you go down approximately a hundred yards, the road is paved. That road, the width of it down through there is approximately sixteen to eighteen feet wide. Now, we go over to where Blake Lawson lives, on the other side of his house, that road is very narrow. It's approximately twelve feet wide. I don't know what the state's right-of-way is down Frehley Town Road. I haven't been able to give an answer to that question. Alan Sumter told me a few minutes ago that the state had approved funding to replace that bridge. I just can't believe anyone would get to that bridge being replaced. From talking with the people, neighbors in the community, most of them did not realize that this abandonment of that section of the highway was the bridge. And they didn't know anything about this hearing. So, again, I drove across over to my property, and I own the area there that's in sort of pink and purple.
It's highlighted there.
It's highlighted there. That is forty-four-plus acres of property. My property runs all the way to the top of the ridge, which is about one mile. I own approximately three-tenths of road frontage from my property line over to where my property line ends. Also, there's other people just on the south side of that bridge that were not aware that this hearing was being held today. So...
Mr. Williams, if you don't mind wrapping up your comments, excuse me.
I will. I will, will fast, okay? In summary, I have a couple of recommendations. I recommend that the board members immediately recommend approval of the replacement of this bridge that goes across the North Fork of the Clench River. Also, I recommend that if it's a safety issue or criminal issue that people live along that road, contact the sheriff's department. I also recommend that that road be paved from Janon Lane down to the other side of Blake Lawson's property and house. So, in closing, I hope that you will support the replacement of that bridge. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Does your company join the Frehley Town Road?
Yes, I have, probably. That's highlighted there.
Yes.
Now, with the answer, approximately three-tenths of a mile across that road.
Right. That was down there pretty much.
And that would create an issue for me in maintaining and developing that property if that bridge was taken out, plus it's a big safety issue, because if that road would be closed from 638, the only way law enforcement and EMS could get in there would be from Highway 604.
You are correct.
Any other questions? I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this morning.
Hi, Beal. Can you put that map back on there and show me where Highway 104 is? Or 604? 604, I'm sorry.
Yes, 604.
604 is what Ray Road...
604 goes from Dustfield down to Pattensville.
Pattensville, yeah.
Pattensville.
We're talking about...
It's right here.
So that's how EMS, fire department, sheriff's department would have to go through?
That goes 58.
Right.
Down and on Frehley Town.
Right.
Yeah. The alternate route is that you're gonna have to go down a little further, across Purchase Ridge Road?
Or go down there and go back.
I don't think going across, as someone said, they could go over to Fairview, but when you're talking about law enforcement, safety, you're talking about time. If EMS, safe law enforcement had to access that area, they'd have to go to Pattensville across 638, and that's, you're looking at ten miles.
Any other questions? I will open up rest of public comments. Blake, you'd given me some stuff before. Do you wanna come up and make your comments now?
I was gonna say, anybody else need to say anything? Can I say something? Talking about the Frehley Town Road, it happens a whole second down there. If you shut it down, something happened, you gotta go all the way around. EMS, you gotta go all the way around. If somebody's having a heart attack, what they gonna do there? And it's all about bugging load. It, it kinda worked out, it needed a little tinkering up there. We've got people in there. That Frehley Town Road takes care of them too. They can get to it in Holy Thyme. You can get through there, get to Birdtown, get to Fairview, Holy Thyme. If something happens to them on the road, that's all for you. A cable road, something happened here, you can go on down that way and get to it. It just kinda breaks your heart pretty bad.
John, when you first came up there, you forgot to station eight.
And it just, it just, just the hands of road, I mean, that bridge needs to be fixed, okay? That road needs to be opened back up. And bunkers need to keep maintaining and keep that road open, tell it on the count. Them other people in there, something happened to them, that road get blocked on the other end, what they gonna do? How we gonna get to it? And another thing, they got paved road on the other end of Bunkers there, and a school bus can't go in there. What, what, what's the problem here? It went in there sixty years ago, okay? I woke the bus, my safety, well, good, brother. Look how much it, the M crew, paved road and everything, if I'm looking into the bus, I come up here before the school shut down, and that, why? Did anybody look into it?
Yeah, we talked to the school bus driver, and they said they didn't feel, their drivers didn't feel comfortable going through there. That's the driver issue though.
You going ahead and drive and say, "I can't go." It, I, I woke the VDOT. I couldn't tell them, say, "I can't push that road, I can't take that road." On the count, you know, I'm afraid of them. They had to get it taken, on the count, other people had to get out there. You see what I mean? Okay, they're all young and young, they, "Is that road, that's so bad? Go ahead and take it." Okay, hey, you putting, being young and young, too. If that bus driving so quick, put somebody else to hold that bus. If she can't drive on my paved road, she can't drive down the full lane. I don't want my young man, okay? If, if, if she that's quick and here, she don't need to drive. And I don't see why they can't pay Birdtown, I mean, you know, it paved up before it, and the whole been a six-year plan, but it's been six years and they still ain't got nothing. Well, we're paying that, though. And, well, they'll pay tax, and I meant, and Bunkers need to get that bus running in there, on the count. They don't cut the guy's track when they pull up the guy's page. When y'all send that thing out, pay your rent tax, you don't pay them out. They, they'll pay rent tax. They'll pay this and pay that. Them young and just, in time, just like you, young. And that bus should do what they... I'm a white, so, all we cars sitting out here, I'm always big deal with the heat. Tax payin', payin' to that thing. A tax payin', payin' to them buggers too, that thing, that thing. What, why I'm gonna need somebody else? Would, would you, would you want a young, young, and not any like a bus and have, have put guys in their vehicles and take them in and out every morning, every night? I just take money out of your pocket, and you have to pay anyone. Y'all, y'all find that right? You think you watch, like your daughters and her too, do this and do that? She, she should be in time and just like the dirty young. I don't care what color she is, who she is, what kind of name she got, she should be just like the dirty young. No young should be where they say, "Don't wait their mouth," okay? I'm waiting, we're waiting, them young and young, women don't send the bus in there. If that road got bad, thick, you see my man?
John? John, you've run out of time for the comment. Let a few other people comment, if you don't mind.
Let, let, let them young and young be like the dirty young, okay? One young man, they're dead. Well, who wants long to wait you call or something? Forgive, say, what don't get you business, that's how somebody else nine down. They don't, they don't hear from who they say, "I'm gonna give that person one hundred cents, I'm gonna try to..." But that might not give the good Lord a helping, okay? That's, that's why they should be good, right, all the way, okay? But can't get away to government, I don't care how dirty he is.
John, you mind giving somebody else a chance to talk? We, we got you. We understand.
But, 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 you know, let's, let's see what, what they do, I mean, you know, you... My name. You my name, everybody's my name. And when I go out there, hell, just say far away, man, don't go a whole lot, but when I do, I want my hundred cents be for them, okay? For you, this, I don't hold nothing back. Just like them, uh, even them go out there, they trying to help people. I, that's part of the job, trying to help people, okay? I'm not afraid of them, Lord. I'm not afraid of the VDOT. They ain't short of hand and never like that. I know they can get what done, but let's try to take Bunkers over to a little bit, on the count. If they're getting them people in now, they, what you would have a heart attack and say the road blocked on the other end, on the Birdtown end? I know it paved road, but it can kick off. How, how will the field, what you take a heart attack back?
John, appreciate it, somebody else? Thank you. I appreciate it. We, we got you. Anyone else can probably comment on the Frehley Town Road?
My name's Fred Stewart. I own some land on Frehley Town Road. I'm a long-winded speaker, or a good speaker. I oppose the bridge being reopened. I'm sure you'll hear, Blake has more information than I do, but there's, for a gravel road, I don't know for, I guess the state has a speed limit, but it's not posted, that I know of anywhere across there. And I have witnessed vehicles going across that bridge, and I don't have a video or anything, but if they didn't leave the road when they went across it, there wasn't much weight of people on the road. I mean, they about jumped it. And I've had them where they, my property, there's a ninety-degree turn toward the North Fork of the Clench there, and they have come around and surpassed, they would skid out the road into my hayfield. And there's another guy, he's, he's got a hayfield there, and not right where mine's at, but they done doughnut circles in his hayfield. And when they blocked the bridge, they had put a kinda button, say, set in there. I talked to a guy that was, I can't remember his name, but anyway, he, I called him and told him that they was going in my hayfield to go around that blockade, across... and told him that he's going in my hayfield to go around that blockade, across the bridge and around the blockade on the other side, and going on across it. He said, well, I figured that with the road blocked, they would recognize that sign. I said, well, you're not considering the people that run through there. And uh there's not a great deal, but trash, beer cans. It's not, all the people that go through there aren't undesirable, but there's some uh bad apples spoils a whole bunch. And uh I would I would rather see it closed and there, I don't have the distance, but from each end of it, a Frehley Town Road, if you go around to Purchase Road, it's uh three mile or so, I don't have the exact distance. But uh as far as EMS going through there, they make a whole lot more speed. They go on the paved two lane road. I don't know what constitutes a two lane road, but there's very few places in there where two cars can meet and pass. A lot of times, one car will have to back up to let the other pass. And I would just prefer the bridge be closed, and that's my personal preference. Whatever you could do to help us, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll take away the oath.
Anyone else propose to comment?
Um, let's cut the chase.
Don't forget to state your name before.
I'm in my name is Roger Stedda, I live in the Kingdom section, right beside Frehley County Road. Let's just cut the chase. These fellows, and I ain't got nothing against none of them, they want that bridge shut, closed. They come in each way, nobody goes through, they don't have big dust. So that's that slows all that down, but the rest of us lives on the same kind of road. I met a state truck this morning coming over here, had to back up to a white spot. That's going up through the canyon, bunker road. You cannot take, even take a car over, and they keep it over. Now, you can go drive it yourself, take your four wheel drive, I give you a head dusting over. But here's the thing, and that's true, if you're going in ambulance and you're saving time, go down and pay. But if there's a wreck there, you can't get there. What's your next option, go all the way up to Faragui? You know, you know what I'm saying, you gotta go all the way up that way. And of course, drugs and drinking's everywhere, it just ain't on Frehley County Road. Y'all people see it, you know it, you know what I'm saying, it's everywhere. So let's just, and and here's my thing, if you're gonna shut the road, shut it down at Purchase Ridge where it comes off the bit, shut it down where it comes off Dustville Highway, let the people that don't go in wants the bridge shut down, keep the road up. Don't just shut it where that bridge is at, work both ends. If you're gonna do it, do it out. I mean, it just makes sense, if you're gonna shut the road. So then, my car was over the state, and Chad Hood with the supervisor, I did come complain to him. And he said, listen, he said, it is harder for me to shut the road down than it is for me to open it up. He said, once that road is established, and it's on everybody's Google Maps, it's that. You know what I'm saying, so. Six one way half, you know?
Thank you for coming.
You go check the Frehley Town Road, you might well check point three down there.
Yeah, I'll look, if you go do it over drugs and all, let's just shut every road we got now, on the terror floor, it ain't just on that one certain road. And I understand Blake had an incident three or four year ago, can't remember exactly in my head, but that one because the road was open, the guy was walking either way, he wasn't driving down that road. I mean, if the road was closed, he could still come over there and do what they doing.
What's your hand?
Uh?
I said, what's your hand?
Anyone?
I've got one comment in reference to the crime in the community. I was a victim of a criminal act last year. There was four kids stole a car in Lee County, came across fifty eight, ditched the car right near where I live, came up the valley, broke into my truck, slept into my truck that night. My wife and I went to Dustville next day, I was going to take the truck, but we decided to take the car, and they were in the truck, sleeping or passed out. When we got back, I went into the basement, they had gone into my basement and stole stuff.
And and another, that's just like.
Let me take.
Gentlemen, if you're gonna address the board, please come up to the podium, okay?
But but let's give everyone a chance to talk first. Is there anyone, sorry, Mr. Stedda, but uh is there anyone else here to to comment on the Frehley Town Road Bridge abandonment?
Everybody's over here, I'm Blake Lawson, live on six six nine Frehley Town Road. No hard feelings, guys, everybody's, everybody has what they have to say, so. I affect everybody. But I'm here to formally express a strong opposition to reopening the bridge on Frehley Town Road. As a resident living directly on this road, I along with many of my neighbors, which I gave you the letters, that's right, strongly feel that keeping the bridge close is a crucial safety and well-being of our community, especially for families and small children. Since the closure of the bridge, we have experienced a noticeable improvement in the safety, peace of mind, quality of life on the road, and no longer feel reckless fear, reckless driving, accidents, or other dangerous activities that have plagued our neighborhood for years. My family, I along with others in the community, and that's on the Frehley Town Road, have lived with constant threats of speeding, drunk driving, even criminal activities, such as drug-related issues, trespassing, vandalism. Closure of the bridge has significantly reduced all those problems. I understand that some may disagree with the closure, but I ask you to consider that those of us who live directly on this road are the ones who deal with the consequences every day. For us, this is not just a short commute, occasional drive, it's our home. Many of the arguments I've heard in favor of reopening the bridge, there are some people who do not face the same risk we do, they do not live on this road, and they do not experience the dangers we face on a daily basis since we live there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. My family, including my two-year-old daughter, both shouldn't have to live with the constant fear of somebody running off the road and the danger hitting us since we live under the road. As someone who has lived on the road since two thousand and fourteen, I have seen firsthand the damage caused by reckless driving, from damaged vehicles torn up fields, and people doing dogs in the hayfields, and constant litter that we're forced to clean up. I've been personally impacted by break-in, which Mr. Stedda said, and had the whole person gun pointed while waiting for the police, as within a drug-induced episode. It was my community, not those that was off the road, that came to my aid and helped repair the damages. It is important to stress that the safety of our community should not take residence over convenience for those community that pass through there. The road has blind curbs and is not conducive to fast traffic, especially when people would drive recklessly. For the sake of our children, families, peace of mind, we respectfully ask that the bridge remain closed. We believe that safety, peace, and well-being of the community should not be determined by those who do not bear the direct consequences of their decisions. The safety of our community, particularly the safety of the small children, should always be, probably. I understand many of you, I understand many of you have grown up around here and know the area well. As I grew up around a lot of you, that's on the opposing side. However, it is important to recognize that those of us who live directly on the road face daily challenges and dangers that others do not. People who do not reside here or live miles up the road should not have a say, just that's my opinion, in what happens to our community. Decisions won't affect their daily lives in the same way it affects ours. Many live well off the road and on private drives, so they don't really understand what we see or grow through. In closing, I'll ask you to consider this, if it were your family, your children, or your grandchildren facing the same dangers that we do every day, and you had a chance to change it, would you stand on the same side, would you stand on the side of opposition to keeping the bridge closed? Or would you, like many of us, prioritize the safety of your loved ones above all else? For the safety of the community, peace of mind, children, well-being, I respectfully ask you to keep the bridge closed. The lives of our families should never be at risk for the sake of future convenience for those that live outside, does not share any concern. Also, it was on, we talked about the drug incidents, yes, there's drugs everywhere, it's all over the roads. It doesn't matter where you go, any back road, but the bridge is closed. Now, we don't have all the through traffic, no, I can worry about that, that was, I guess.
Just cut the chase, get right down to the move there, road was open, and you moved in the house, the house was sitting there, so then you can't come back, so why don't roll open, tell us on the other side, roll?
Mr. Stedda, can we please be respectful of of everyone?
I mean, I know, but let's just.
But I understand.
That's what I had to say about it, usually the other letters there as well, that's from other people. And uh when it came to doing all the other drug drug-related incidences, I dealt directly with the detective, because that's what I was asked to do, me and him would talk back and forth. And I would let him know a lot of other things that went on. So here's my way of saying. Appreciate it, thank you all much.
But let's see if there's anyone else that had uh that wishes to speak on that. Anyone else that hasn't spoken already?
I'm feet first here, I have to go to sleep right there. Good morning, I'm Larry Harrison, I live on the border between District Five and Six in the National Tunnel, Dustville Community. I was just there thinking, you know, roads bring people together, they should connect each other. And that certainly was for me, because the first time I remember on that road, I was about seven years old, and I was in the back of a fifty-four step side Chevrolet Chevy. We were going to visit relatives over in Purchase. I still drive the road, I don't go through anymore, obviously. Stop and get a good drink there, Frehley Spring. If anybody has a drink from the Frehley Spring, I recommend you stop and have one. Uh also, the picture of the broke paddle in the second grade and the fourth grade, June Delaney, Mr. Michael, can I sure break one on you? Uh I need a lot of, I need a lot of taming down, I guess. But she also lived there, and we would go see the Delaney sisters, we would go through to see relatives on the Purchase Bridge. I think it's an asset to the county. I understand the landowners having an issue now. The issue is not with people that choose to drive in a in a civilized manner. That that doesn't affect. My grandfather, I doubt he was speeding with his uh his murals when he went through there years ago too, so. I think that's an issue of just people speeding and reckless, it's just reckless individuals. I think that's an enforcement issue. Is there, why do you want the road, traffic commerce? I think, but I think it's an asset to the county in the long run. It's a wonderful drive, I take people from, friends out of town, and relatives. I used to especially have relatives from Florida that sadly passed away, and I always loved to go down Frehley Town Road, stop at this room, get a cold drink, then we go on down and go down the B line. And sometimes we'd cross over, we'd go into the Purchase, sometimes we'd go down and cross Bird Town and back up. So it's a beautiful part of south, southwest Scott County. I'm advocating that we do rebuild the bridge, but we also give some consideration to these landowners who do have concerns. Those are my concerns too. It's it's, you know, I live there at, I think that's a bridge. It's kind of quiet, we have issues there too. It's a commonplace, I think anywhere rural is going to attract certain individuals looking to hide out for their nefarious reasons. So I want to advocate that we do rebuild the bridge, and I'm not really certain, is this be a single lane bridge that they're looking at, or a double? Two, two lanes?
It's still going to be a single lane bridge, that's what I understand.
All right, well, that's what I have to say. I thank you for your time, y'all have a thankless job sometime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken have any comments? All right, I'll close out the comments for this. Discussion amongst the board members, you all have been given the the letters, the incident report, but also heard from members of the community. Any discussion on on this matter?
The sheriff was asked if he's aware of any issues on this road. He said he was not aware of any. I also went back in April twenty-five and contacted the nine-one-one office, and I went over to this at the April meeting. Uh there was no history of drug-related calls to the nine-one-one system going back to twenty twenty-one. And there's one arrest in twenty-three of an intoxicated female at the bridge. So it appears that there's no calls being asked for help, and based on what sheriff said, he's not aware of any either. So I think it's more of a law enforcement issue than a bridge issue. And I think somebody else said that. So I think you need more law enforcement in the area. But I think you had some information on recommendations from EMS department.
Yeah, and I I'm kind of echoing what we kind of heard already, you know, with fire and EMS. I did reach out to uh, you know, Dustfield, and they would, you know, be opposed to closing the road just for the same reasons that we've heard, delaying response to, you know, those calls. Also, you know, with the bus routes and stuff, you know, anytime you kind of close, you know, a road, it gets to be, you know, tough to, it makes a big difference with the flow and everything that's going on, so um that's what I had, I had talked to Roger.
Yeah, uh sorry, I should mention this beforehand too, I had a a number of calls and and texts. All of them were, or most of them, there might have been one that was for the closure, but most of them were against the closure. Uh Kate Jesse, he lives in that subdivision right above Frehley Town Road, he was against the closure because uh sometimes the rain floods the small bridge at the start of Frehley Town Road, and they have no other way to uh exit. There is a uh Mr. Mike Bowlen that owns property on that road that had texted me. And uh from his text message, he uh if we abandon the bridge, he wants to sue us for that for damages, for making his property harder to access. Uh I'm just telling you what his text message said, and I showed it to Ms. Cabley. And then I talked to Tim Edwards, who who said he was, you know, either or, but he had noticed that the traffic, the uh the traffic, undesirable traffic, I guess you could call it, on on that road still happened, but it just didn't go all the way through. That he had called the other day about some people being passed out beside the road, and never got a response down there, and then, you know, they woke up a couple hours ago. But anyways, that is, that's the con, that's why people have contacted me. So just throwing that out there as well, sorry I did.
And I would just again emphasize that the V-Dog is that bridge, you know, slated to be replaced, it's funded. There had been a previous board action, I believe, in support of that.
Anyone else had any comments? Danny, I think you said you had some of the comments about an incident.
Well, they said that they was, the way I took it, okay? They was some down there, I'll say, partying or something, and uh said they called nine-one-one and said it had been almost two hours for something, said they was busy, couldn't go check it, said it's almost two hours before they called back. And they was already going by time, they acknowledged.
I think we talked to the same person. Anyone else? All right, so to kind of close out this issue, we need to vote either way, exactly, Ms. Cabley. So do I hear a motion to proceed with the rebuilding of the Frehley Town Road Bridge? So, do I hear a motion to proceed with the rebuilding of the Frithly Town Road Bridge?
I'm going to make that motion.
I have a motion to rebuild the bridge.
Rebuild that bridge.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All right, adding ten seconds. All in favor of rebuilding the Frithly Town Bridge signify at the same time?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, six to one. So it will recommend to VDOT that they rebuild that bridge. All right, moving on.
Can, is Sheriff Bates still here?
Mr. Bates, yeah.
Okay. Is it possible that, like, whenever you all go to Duffield, maybe you could just swing through there?
Yeah, come up seven fifty feet through the kingdom, too, while you're in there.
We should be able to do that.
I mean, it goes on everywhere, you know that, sir.
Yeah, we have been continuously, so, yeah. If we had more people, we could do a lot more.
That is a problem throughout the gallery and everyone.
When you got three people working shift, and one's off on vacation or sick, you got two. And that makes it hard.
But, I mean...
Especially in night shift, night shift.
Yeah.
Day shift we have.
And I understand why people do that, because they're leaving Duffield, I guess, or leaving the highway. And that's the first, like, country-looking, private-looking road that you got down through there. Of course, they're going to pull through. Pull through there to kind of hide out. And so, yeah, maybe once the bridge is open, if you all want to find it for like a month or two. It doesn't have to be forever. Just really hit it hard.
We can do that. We have that list, you'll let them know that to patrol this area, this area is good. So that's no problem. It's just, the timing may not be right for everybody, but we, they go through there during the night. You know, most people were talking low, they went through there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, just any, anything you could do to kind of help that, maybe, you know, let people, we'll, you know, inadvertently let people know that that's not a safe place to set your residence, like that.
We, Major J.C. at Chetford Dispatch on that also. And we, we had four calls so far this year. A DOA, a fire department call, suspicious activity may or may not be drug-related, or maybe, I don't know what we're talking about, in the, in the, check a vehicle. Another one gave a gift to the state police, two subjects in an old city car in a driveway. Suspicious vehicle, but that's, that was back in seventy-two, probably what you're talking about.
All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, we'll close that public hearing out. To recommend to VDOT that they rebuild the bridge. We're moving on to the next public hearing on the possible adoption of ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the erosion sediment and sediment control ordinances of Scott County to add the definition of farm structure in Section ten dash two, and to add farm structure agreement in lieu of plan to the fee schedule. We'll open the public hearing for that. Does anyone have any comments on the erosion and sediment control ordinance? All right, nobody has any comments, we'll close with expression. Board members, discussion on this?
I did have an opportunity to discuss this with our county extension agent, Scott Gerald. And he's in favor. He said it does support farmers.
All right, do I hear a motion to adopt and amend and reenact in its entirety the erosion sediment control ordinance of Scott County?
So, move.
All right, I'll go Stephanie, move. Do your second. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, unfinished business. What have we got here? Anything?
So, I'll touch on a few things, but you got to...
The, we've discussed the lawn mowers at the Keith Park, is that going to be covered?
Yeah, I have that under my record, yeah.
That's thirteen B.I. All right, new business. Dave Rhodes from Davenport Company.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Dave Rhodes, again, pleased to be here, thank you. If you do not, I've got a hard copy of what I'm going to present. Just know I can hand that out, and I've got some for the audience.
Please.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Take any foul notes? I don't know if Mr. Wilson, if you want to say anything, or start, I can just go right in, or whatever you like.
Um, yeah, well, why don't you go ahead, and then I'll kind of follow up a little bit. I will mention, I guess, that the school board man heard Mr. Rhodes' presentation last night and voted unanimously to move forward, but, just to think about that, but...
So, in terms of page one, a little background of, I think many of you, you seem to hear before. I'm David Rhodes, and the principal partner at Davenport Company out of Richmond. And we've had the good fortune of working with Scott County company for more than three decades. So, no stranger to this great county. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Little background, John Ferguson contacted me as a follow-up to some discussions I had with your staff, oh, about a month or so ago, indicating that they, of course, were looking at having two bids with regard to making two successful results on two separate projects. One for Yuma and the other for Lever City. That said, he asked if I would help him, and with the approval of the school board, and hopefully this board, move forward with funding to take care of those two bids. He had contacted me, we had worked with him, thanks to this board's approval, back in 2012, 2013, on some energy performance contracts, which worked out. And ultimately, the county school board paid the debt off even faster than our schedule. So all good. So with that said, you can see there that the two bids, those are the winning bids, I believe, and correct me, but one of the projects got three bids, I think one got four bids, so maybe five. But those are the two winning bids. We, of course, have no commentary on whether that's a good bid or what have you. We're simply told that we have roughly about five point three million that needs to be taken care of. But the other thing is, this is very important for this particular board and citizens, is that the school board has four hundred thousand dollars, give or take, already allocated out of their recurring budget to take care of this. So they will not be coming to this board for any financial assistance. That's important. I wanted to make sure that was clear. We've made sure that, in looking at the numbers and looking at the cash flows, they indeed appear to be able to fund this project without having to come back to the county board for any assistance. So the reason we're here, of course, under Virginia law, is that you, of course, have to weigh in, have to make certain approvals, and depending upon how you borrow that money, with your approval, may even need a public hearing to do that. And so, again, this board, working with your county attorney, working with bond counsel, as well as the attorney for, the school board was there last night. All of those parties will make sure that whatever we do is going to be according to the Virginia laws, like we've done before with you. So with all that said and done, we agree that I would come in front of the two boards and talk about a plan of finance. So if you go to page two, what we're going to do with your blessing is the same thing we did years ago in the energy performance approach. We're going to dual-track that. And what we mean by that is, we're going to both put out a request for bid for a direct bank loan. At the same time, we're going to apply to the state for the Virginia Public School Authority that does their financings twice a year. Once in the fall, once in the spring. That said, though, when they do their financing in the fall, they need a resolution of this board. They have to have that, they have to have a public hearing. And so we put together a schedule. But the bottom line is, either way we go, if we move forward, it would be done, we believe, by the end of October. And that appeared to work for the folks over at the school board in terms of their bidding and what have you. So on page three, what we would like to do is to send out this request to the banks immediately and get the results back by the end of August. We have August twenty-eighth, you'll see that on the next page. There is a county board, as I understand it, on the third of September, and then there's the school board on the fourth of September. So, unlike yesterday with the times we flipped, this is a little bit different. But the hope is, again, no guarantee, the hope is, is that we will get some good results from the direct bank loans. If we do, then we may very indeed recommend, working with Josh, working with John and his people, that we pursue a direct bank loan. The, the school board understands that it's possible, if not probable, that if we do the direct bank loan, we'll need some form of collateral. Those schools are more than ample to be the collateral. We've worked through VA Corp. and the insurance, so that's not a problem. That doesn't impact you, the county board, but it is the schools, and they seem to understand that. If we go through the state program, it is to full faith and credit of the county, there is no collateral, other than, of course, the county saying we will make those payments if ever there's a shortfall. And that's the way that program has always worked. So then, lastly there, the Economic Development Authority. If we go through the direct bank loan, we will need to work with John Kilgore, as we've been the past. That's a legal conduit. If we do the VPSA, we do not use the EDA. Not any extra expense, that's not the issue, it's just the way the structure works. And we've worked, we've gone both ways with y'all, hopefully here, is that I've been involved. So neither one gives us any concern, I think. You know, I think the county attorney would agree as well, it's whatever makes the most sense. And we'll see. So with this dual-track approach, on the page four, I put together the schedules side by side. I've also talked to Sam Zanderson, which is, again, your bond counsel. That's the longstanding opinion that is necessary to make sure that everything is done. Our goal here is to do this on what we call a tax exempt basis. I tell people, for those in the audience, as well as you, that if we're able to borrow on a tax exempt basis, and we think we will be, the interest rates will be lower than we, as individuals, could borrow if we have a mortgage. That's considered taxable borrowing, more traditional. If we can do a tax exempt, it's a rare opportunity, local governments, not-for-profits, are able to borrow on a tax exempt basis. And that's how we've done a lot of your financings before. Not necessarily all of them, but if we can, and those rates are quite favorable. My hope is, is that we would get an interest rate that would be, I don't want to say publicly for purposes of banks and all, but I think, again, we hope to get something very competitive and put them into competition. And that's hope it worked for us, here at the county and other places. All that being said, if we don't get a bid, and we don't get a bid that we like from the banks, then we would move to the VPSA. Ultimately, if markets don't look good, and we can always back out of the VPSA. Hopefully not. There is talk, and there's a sense that rates are going to be moving downward over time. Usually when that happens, I will tell you, the markets build that in ahead of time. A lot of people say to me, well, they'll drop the rate next Tuesday, so to speak. Should drop on Wednesday, usually it's already done, sort of baked in the cake. So I feel like, for the moment, again, you know, knock on wood, the markets are good. We hope it stays that way. But ultimately, even with the county and the school board saying, go for all this. If you do, if things go bad, we already have the ability to pull it back. So, we just want to make sure everybody realizes that. With that, that's really all I have. We may ask through, through this county administrator, that he puts in certain advertisements for the public hearing. We'll recommend that public hearing, probably, at a size to be a little bit of bond math and what have you. Probably a little bit over six million dollars is what we'll do. We can work through the exact amounts of that. The thought here is, again, it may just be a good precaution. We may also find, the bond counsel says, we may be able to do a public hearing later in September or beginning of October. But nevertheless, I want to make sure you knew, that's probably part of the process, certainly if we go through VPSA. Direct bank loan, may or may not be. Sometimes, bond counsel feels if you go through the EDA, you don't need a public hearing. Others may feel otherwise. I'm indifferent. I look to both Sally and folks over at Sam Zanderson. So with that, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions. So, appreciate it. Good to be here.
Any questions for the board, or, sorry. So from us today, you would need a motion to support this?
I'd like a motion to support this. Ultimately, we probably, again, it's going to be bond counsel, will tell you what formal actions are necessary on the third, if, whatever, maybe it's the following month. But I'm hopeful it's the third, if we can get things rolling. It's just moving forward with our...
Any discussion amongst the board members?
I do have some comments, so. I know today your purpose is financial feasibility of the project. But I'll take you back a couple of years, when this delegation was in Richmond for the General Assembly, and we met in your office. And as I recall, the first topic you brought up is the feasibility, or not the feasibility, the eight to ten-year timeline on the feasibility of continuing our school properties due to their aging condition. The two schools that we're talking about, Yuma's fifty years old, Weber City is seventy. Are you suggesting, and I know you're here for different reasons, but are you suggesting we put more money into aging schools? Your recommendation at that time was consolidation. And I think you were, at the General Assembly, was considering locality sales tax. Could you comment on that?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I appreciate you coming to, to our offices. We really enjoy it when folks do that, and hopefully we'll do it again come this January. I'll be here before we know it. Just a little, just a small little clarification. We, as non-engineers, don't make any recommendations as to whether or not schools should consolidate. No different than when I worked for years on Wise County consolidations, down from the five schools down to three. As they will tell you, we did not comment on whether or not they should go from five to three. It may make sense to us, but that's not our expertise. That said, however, if at the time, and you've got a good memory better than mine about that, if we're able to demonstrate that financially, there could be some cost savings and benefits, we certainly would have concurred with that. So for us, though, here in this moment, and I'll get to the one percent in a minute. For us, in this moment, we were just provided with, this is what the school board is planning to do. And we weren't asked to our opinion whether or not it made sense. It was said to us, to do this relative improvements, each about two and a half million, rounding off, this was going to be helpful to continue the useful life of those schools. So, I can't really speak to whether or not that's the best use of the dollars. Y'all know better than I do. The second point, though, one percent, make sure everybody knows this, maybe not, and for the audience. Over the last two years, the legislature, in a true rare bipartisan position, has overwhelmingly approved allowing local governments to go to referendum in their respective local government, and have a up to, up to one percent sales tax. And that sales tax, if it were approved by your citizens, would be for one thing and one thing only, and that is for school construction. Doesn't go for prior debt service, can't go for operations, salaries of anything, retirement, nothing, just to take care of school construction. It allows for both pay-as-you-go... It allows for both pay-as-you-go and borrowing for that. And it doesn't have a sunset. It allows it for 30, 35, as long as debt is outstanding, that 1% or up to 1% can be there. That's a serious number that could happen. So here's what happened, y'all know maybe. The last two years, it got passed, and Governor Youngkin decided that he would veto that. It appears that either the new governors to be possibly will be a little more favorable towards that, that 1%. What has happened previously is nine individual local governments, I think it was seven or eight counties, most of our clients, and the city of Danville, and maybe one other city there, all went to the legislature over the last roughly decade and on an individual basis, asked to be allowed to have a referendum. This legislation that was defeated was just to say statewide, everybody can ask and have the referendum. So right now, if you wanted to do that, Mr. King, it would have to be a formal request of your county into the legislature at some subsequent, you know, subsequent legislative, you know, year. I think the hope is, is that it will finally pass next year, this coming year. So that said, you could hold a referendum fairly quickly thereafter. I'm not an expert on the timing and what is required. But I know a lot of folks are thinking about, if it does pass, the hope is they could do a referendum, let's say, next November. And then, obviously, they're good to go. I will tell you, it's interesting, of the nine, all nine passed. And of the nine, it was not, maybe you think of being northern Virginia, big cities or big counties. It's actually not. It was really mostly communities all the way on the eastern shore, all the way out west on 58, pretty much on Route 58 belt. So a lot of our clients, like Henry County and Halifax County, Danville, Pennsylvania County, those folks all passed it. So they are, just for what it was worth, and that's been a good thing for all of them. So I don't know if that answers your question, but there's been a sense then, particularly, the sales tax is, a lot of folks can be paid the sales tax, and they're not necessarily residents of that particular local government. And that's been, I think, the theory versus just the real estate, which is everybody that's here, so.
Mr. Castile, thank you. Mr. Castile, I had an opportunity to visit each of these schools this week. And I think our opinion, he can speak for himself. Weber, Yuma definitely needs help. My only concern is, are we putting money somewhere that then a few years later, we're going to not have that school? And the third, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the third, the students, that both Yuma and Elementary are from Tennessee, and they do not pay tuition.
And we've over the years known about that, you know, absolutely.
So for those reasons, I think, obviously, Yuma needs help. But did we put money in, and then a few years later, no offer ever to school? And that's my concern.
And I just want to reiterate that the school division has the funds to move forward with this. They're not coming to the board for asking for extra funds. So as far as, you know, new tax dollars or anything, that's not what we're looking at here. It's more of, you know, coming to the board as a, yeah, as a support or a formality to move forward with the RFP, is what we're looking at.
I personally think it's a wonderful idea. I'm an alumni at Weber City Elementary. I have watched the growth of that school, and it just warms my heart to see the school the way it is. And Yuma also, whenever I got married, I moved to Yuma. I lived behind the school. So, I mean, it just warms our heart just to see these schools thriving and everything. And I support it wholeheartedly.
Yeah, and I would also remind the board that it's our, our responsibility doesn't lie with deciding which schools need to get built or not. That is, that lies with the school.
It's the school board.
We'll try our best to finance or work on what they need. But, you know, at a certain point, we have to trust them. And if they believe they can get extra life out of these schools and provide better services to the children there, I think that's something that they have decided that they can do. And it's just up to us to say, you know, whether we're willing to support them in that pursuit.
I'd like to ask you a question there, David.
Yes.
When we was in Richmond there, it could be two years, a perfect year. We was talking there, and you said, in the next 10 years, we definitely is going to build some new schools. Said we had the older schools in the state of Virginia. And I've kind of heard about everybody's opinion except Mr. Brickley's jitters there. Mr. King's, like he said, we did go to Yuma. And I can definitely see that it does need help. But the deal is, we're wasting our money in building more onto schools that's 50 to 70 years old. Then the next 10 years, that we're going to have to take and build new schools and solidate schools or whatever. And Mr. King's there, he's got, had the numbers. One of the schools has got like 34%. And one of the schools has got 31% of Tennessee students. One of the principals said they had checked in some of their grandparents, and some ladies being divorced. And one lives in Tennessee and one lives in Virginia. And said that they had checked in, the school board had checked on stuff like that. Well, God, no.
I would love to say this, Mr. Castile. Yeah, I think when you come to Richmond, there's a variety of meetings you have. I certainly would not know that you have the oldest schools, if you do, in the state. That's definitely the.
Why, you said it.
If I said that, if someone, you all gave that to me or something, I wouldn't know. And I know schools that are 100 years old that we work with in other places. But again, my view in all this is that, that's really not my world, except to say, and I remember the meeting too, absolutely to say that if you've got schools that are that old, inevitably, there's going to be renovation, which we see. We do see 100-year-old schools get renovated. They've been kept up very nicely. But at the same time, we also see, like, in Wise County, the consolidation, we see that as well as brand-new schools. I think the way I look at it is very simple. I know a lot, I believe, about your overall finances as a county. I've seen them get better. I've seen them be responsible. I've been here, or you're going to say here, meaning, you've been with me, or some of you've been with me, when we talked about the county needing to get their fund balance up. You may recall that, and I told you that. And you did that, so you moved that up. In fact, we presented that to the regional jail authority last week. I was here as well. And we showed you, you're right, a very solid unassigned fund balance, as we call it. That wasn't the case 50 years ago. And so I appreciate y'all listening to us. I think here, the way I look at this, I don't make an opinion on whether Yuma or Weber is using the money wisely. I think, I just want the school board to know that they know the school's best. They know for the short run, those relative dollars to roughly $2.5 million each. I saw, in fact, they had the schematic up yesterday as I was leaving, up on board, you know, as I was leaving the meeting. And I made a point to look at that. And that looks, and it makes sense to me, what they're doing. But then again, I'm talking about that as an outsider, not as a professional. From a financial perspective, to your administrator's point, the fact that they're not asking you for any dollars, I take comfort in that. I also take over the fact that they actually allocated roughly that $400,000 starting in this fiscal year. It just got started literally 35, 40 days ago. So I feel like they've been responsible on the financial end. That's where my world. And so if they've been responsible in the financial world, I'm here to say, we'd like to get you to let them move forward. And that's really all. But as to knowing your school's oldest, I certainly, that was not my original knowledge. I'll tell you that, but, so I'll make sure of that.
Mr. Rosen, Mr. Manus, if I could take a minute. I agree with both of you. First of all, Mr. Manus, the county voters and taxpayers voted for the school board to run our schools. And they appointed Mr. Ferguson as superintendent to run those schools. And our only position here is to whether we back that, if we will financially back it. We're not here to determine what we build or when we build. The only thing that I would suggest is that we do have a public hearing, whether it be VPSA or direct funding. And I think that'll be determined later, but I think we need a, we need a public hearing.
And to your point of, Mr. Brickley, that's why, again, a lot of bond counsels want that public hearing, no matter what. So citizens can come and provide their input on that, good, bad, or indifferent. So I personally like that idea. I think it's a healthy.
Will that be up to us to decide?
What's that?
Will that be up to the board here to decide?
It would. And I think, Sally, that they could, they want to make sure with public hearing, there's nothing that precludes that.
No. If I may, today, just step one. I mean, just get it up off the ground. As Mr. Rose said, it doesn't lock the school division or the county into anything. This is just to prove that RFP. And yes, the public hearings will be at a later date, you know, to be said.
Well, I will make the motion.
And I'm going to second it.
That we approve. Yes, to get this moving.
Stephanie first.
Okay.
Are you planning on doing both of those projects at one time, John? Or are you going?
That is, excuse me, Christian. Yes, sir.
Go and do it.
That's why, that's why we are asking Mr. Rose's help to get, to establish or procure the necessary funding. Like to do both at once, if possible.
What about the federal money that comes down to the schools? Is that in the motion of getting done away with?
We did make application to receive additional assistance. I have yet to hear any results from that, from the state.
I didn't know where, if federal money was cut out, if that would hinder y'all's being able to pay this back or not.
We did not receive any federal funding for school construction, sir.
But you all did apply for a grant.
We did apply for a grant in hopes of getting back a certain percentage of what is paid out on these, on these particular projects, but we have not heard anything back.
And that will materially affect the amount that you all have to finance, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's a rebate, basically.
And I would point out, as Mr. John said, if we were fortunate to get some material dollars that we didn't expect, then we could pay down some of that debt. It would not be a debt, it would be a great positive. And I'd be delighted to have that happen.
All right, there's still a motion standing on the floor to approve this. Motion by Stephanie and seconded by Michelle. All in favor? Seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will add a comment. I like Mr. Brickley's.
Hold on, listen. Just one, or?
I'll say no to, two notes. And I don't know enough about it at the time. And it's a.
All right. I would like to follow up with Mr. Brickley's recommendation. In favor of that, I think that needs to be.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think having it out there in the public eye is better. Y'all have the approval to proceed, and we appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's take a little recess for about 10 or 15 minutes, and we'll start the round. So we'll reconvene. Planning District One Behavioral Health Performance Contract.
Mr. Wilson, you can start, please.
I will. I'll just say that I appreciate you coming. And I kind of put in my memo to the board, hopefully you had a chance to look at it, that the performance contract kind of comes around every, is it every year or two years?
It's, I mean, a contract that can make changes every two weeks or whatever.
Okay, yeah, it's pretty routine. But she was kind enough to offer to come and be available for questions or anything. I know that the document's in the packet. I don't know if you had a chance to look at all 450-some pages of it, but I guess, any questions for, if you have something to say?
I will say that it's, there's not many changes in the, in the performance contract from last year. There's just some redefining, some codes around federal brands, and some changes they've made at the state level, so.
All right, is that a question? Do we need to approve this? Or is this just purely informational?
It's not only a resolution.
Do I, has everyone had a chance to look over it? Has anyone got any questions?
And I have a note very much in draft four, which you all saw. So when it is approved and I get a clean copy, I will send that back out to Mr. Wilson from law.
Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a vote.
All right, Mr. Peter makes the motion, definitely approved. And do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, everybody, if I want to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most care.
Do you think we can?
Thank you. All right. Ms. Lawrence.
Good morning.
What do you want to read? It's still morning.
It's still morning, yes. We still have 55 minutes for the morning. I'm Glenna Lawrence. I'm the director of Scott County Department of Social Services. Most of you guys know me. I'm here today to talk about two issues. First, a request for an ordinance for a bonus. And secondly, the PIP program. The good news is I'm asking for additional funding today. So get that out of the way before I start talking. Always a plus, isn't it? So first off, the ordinance. The General Assembly approved this past year for local departments of social services to be included in the 1.5% bonus, which was, which was provided to state employees. This is something new for the Department of Social Services. I've been with the department for 34 years, and we've never had this opportunity before. DSS employees, we're kind of in between county employees and state employees. We are county employees, but we are state-supported other than the 15% county match. But when the state receives bonuses, the state-supported employees do not. So over the last few years, we've experienced statewide a lot of retention issues with staff due to just workloads, the complexity of the work, the safety issues that continue to develop. So we've done a lot of advocating. And this year, the General Assembly did include local DSS employees in their state bonus. However, in order for us to provide that, even though they provided the funding, we do have to have a county ordinance. Because that is, you know, it's part of the code. Any local government official, it's required to have a county ordinance. Now, one other issue with the bonus is our state commissioner, Mr. James Williams, has also proposed a performance bonus to benefit workers that perform at a high percentage rate on Medicaid renewals. And kind of the backstory on this is Medicaid unwinding. And I'm not, I don't know if you're familiar with Medicaid unwinding, but basically, during COVID, there were no Medicaid reviews. So across the state, if you were receiving Medicaid, there were no reviews on that during the public health emergency. So this lasted for several years, about three years. And then, once that was over, all those renewals had to be completed. So there was hundreds of thousands of those across the state. We still have 80,000 statewide of those Medicaid renewals out there. And that's at a cost to the state of about $50 million. Because if you're on Medicaid and you're not continuing to be eligible, the state is still paying those fees. So to say all that is, he is proposing a performance bonus So to say all that is he is proposing a performance bonus to Medicaid staff that are processing those in a timely manner. There's been lots of strategies to try and get these numbers down. It basically equates to we have outdated technology and the work demands outweigh the workforce. So this is just an idea that he has. He has proposed. However, even if that were provided from the state directly to the employee, we could not do that without an ordinance as well. So Ms. Kegley and I have worked together on the proposed ordinance, and we have put both of those factors in there. So I'm here today to ask for your support for that, to begin the process, the public hearing and all the things that follow. I have a copy of that ordinance. Do you guys, did you guys have that in your packets?
Yes.
Okay. So any questions on that?
Just to clarify, we're only approving the use of state funds for those bonuses?
It is it is in our existing budget. Yes, yes, that was presented, and the state funds. Actually, the state has provided thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars for us to implement this, and we've actually calculated it, and we only require thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. So they have actually provided a little more than than we're going to need. Of course, that that could be on when they did those calculations and the stack we have now, so lots of things factor into that.
Understood.
There are other employees that are getting the bonus that the county pays that would need this ordinance as well, like the county-funded deputy non-111 workers, but I think all that's figured into the budget.
Yes, all that was figured into the budget. All right. Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance as it was approved?
No, no, you need to have a public hearing in September. So you need to authorize advertising for the public.
I need a motion to authorize the advertising of the public hearing for this ordinance to provide 1.5% bonus to full-time employees.
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All in favor, but by my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have a public hearing in September. All right.
Okay. So now, I had had a request to present on the PIP program. So the PIP program, if you're not aware what that stands for, that is a Percentage of Income Payment Program, and it is in regards to utility bills. So this is a result of the Virginia Clean Economy Act, and it was developed to offer low-income households the opportunity to have their electric bills based on a percentage of their income. So this is per code, and it is only applicable to Phase One utility companies, which is Appalachian Power, and Phase Two, which is Dominion Energy. So basically, for our area, you would have to be an Appalachian Power customer. So the PIP is funded. It is not a government-assisted program. It is actually funded through the utility companies. And if you look on your bill, you will actually see a fee that is called a universal service fee, and that is how the PIP is funded. Those funds all go together, and the power company funds that. So how it works is basically eligibility is determined by the local Department of Social Services. We take those applications. However, the enrollment or the disenrollment is through the utility company. So our role is only the eligibility determination. So keep in mind, I am presenting this from the DSS perspective, not the utility company perspective. But it does help income-challenged customer manage their electric bills year-round. So the monthly bill amount is basically based on a percentage of your household income and the type of heat source you have. So if you have electric heat, it is, make sure to get this right, if you have electric heat, it is 10%, or if you have another heat source, it's 6% of your monthly income. So so for example, and this is based on the federal poverty scale, so for eligibility, we look at 150% of the federal poverty scale. So just to give you an example, for a family of four, your monthly income would have to be under forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this is not, you have to evaluate like all the factors, because this is not a program that's good for everybody. It doesn't always work out mathematically. So for a family of four with that income, if it was 6% of your income, it would be two hundred and forty-one dollars a month is what you would pay on your power bill. If it's 10%, it would be four hundred and two dollars per month. So just for that particular example, if your power bill normally was not over four hundred dollars a month, then it would not mathematically, you know, work out that it would, you know, that it would make the most sense. Now, also, with this program, over a twelve-month period, you have to make those power bill payments timely. They have to be on time and in full for twelve consecutive months in order for the remainder of your bill to be eliminated. So basically, each month, you would have what the actual electric bill was, but you would only make your PIP payment. Then at the end of twelve months, if you've made all of those payments on time and all in full, then the balance would be waived. But if you do not make a payment on time or in full, then it goes back, and it's not twelve consecutive months, if that makes sense. So that that's that's the process with that. It is not an unlimited fund. At any point in time, those funds can be depleted, and if so, those households would be notified, and at that point in time, they would become responsible for the entire bill. So questions about that?
Could you give us some examples? Well, how many people do you have signed up already? Households signed up already?
I, you know, I didn't bring those exact numbers, but I'm thinking that we had maybe about three hundred households.
Do you have an idea about how many would qualify that this could benefit in the county?
No, I do not. I do not, because it's it's more than just an eligibility determination. It's determining if that program is actually mathematically, you know, more financially feasible for each household. So no, it would be difficult to estimate that.
The the three hundred people you have, households you have signed up now, do you not have an average of what their, I think, electric bill is under this?
We do not, because our only role is just to determine the eligibility, and then that goes on to the the utility company.
I think it's a good benefit, and for seniors, and I think our, we probably have a lot more people in the county that would qualify and benefit from this.
Yes.
Let me ask you a question, and and just to reiterate, so this makes sense. You pay off the PIP for my twelve months, but if you happen to miss any of those, you're subject to the full balance?
You're subject to the full balance, or your twelve months starts over.
Okay.
And a lot of those decisions, whether you're, you can be disenrolled from the program, but that is up to the utility company.
That just seems, yeah, if you have one emergency, you might have to start over. That was, as I said, well, maybe, but I understand where there has to be a line somewheres.
Yes.
So the people that think they might qualify, what, how do they approach you or the chair in this building?
Yes, if you wish to apply, they need to have, they can come personally to the local Department of Social Services, or they can apply online at Common Health. And it's a very simple eligibility process, basically, proof of income and social security numbers.
Common Health?
Common Health. Yes, Common Health. That's an online program that you can apply for any public assistance program.
Is it kind of like an agitator? Does it have all the programs, or is it just four?
Yeah, you can apply for TANF, Medicaid, the PIP.
Last name, okay. So it is like.
Something a little different from your program that I read, I think, in Kingsport Times. The General Assembly is considering or have approved refinancing possibly the AEP debt. And if that happens, and it passes another governmental agency approval, then there could be a 15% reduction in electric bills starting first, I think, next year at some point. I don't know if you've heard that, but that's different than what you're talking about. There's some better things coming if they can refinance their debt.
I'd be wary about trusting them to actually give you the full 15% discount there, but that would be nice. Be nice.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Anytime. Thank you, guys, for your support.
We appreciate you all. All right, Commissioner Reddian. Ms. Tammy Taylor, your staff.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
I'm good. And we'll get even better, right? We're going forward. I'm here for the timeline of the general reassessment. We need to make a motion or a decision to make a motion. Code fifty-eight point one dash three two five two for the county, and it reads, there shall be a general reassessment of real estate every four years. Or if determined by a majority vote of the county's Florida supervisors every three years, if you make this, make this vote, any county that has a total population of fifty thousand or less, made a late by majority vote of its Florida supervisors to conduct a general reassessment at either five-year or six-year interval. So in the past, we've been doing six years. We have twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three people in the county, so we definitely extend that. You guys choose to do so.
When was our last reassessment?
It went into effect twenty-twenty-two. It felt like it took two years to get it completed and finalized, all through what we had to deal with, but.
So that reassessment was completed in twenty-twenty-one and then went into effect in twenty-twenty?
The groundwork was done by the reassessors in twenty-twenty-one. It's booked on January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Is, are there any advantages besides cost to the county?
Um, if you do it less than six years, it's a good question.
Either way, is there, are there advantages either way?
The pain wouldn't be so bad, I think, with the taxpayers, if you did it less. It's going to cost, whether you do it four years or six years, the cost is going to be.
I think it would be a savings for six years. Have a third term, if you have a frame, basically.
Yeah, but then you have a large shock every six years. If you imagine the last one, if the last reassessment was done in twenty-twenty-one, previous reassessment was done in twenty-fifteen, you think about how much inflation we saw between twenty-fifteen and twenty-twenty-one. That's a.
I think the shock is less rather than the price. I know that people get excited about.
The six-year shock is less.
Because we haven't had an increase in what, in, I don't know, I mean, even though the values and whatever.
Six years.
Six was that?
We've not raised taxes. Matter of fact, we lowered taxes one year.
That was in twenty-two, wasn't it?
I think so. The year of the assessment, we lowered it.
You lowered it for twenty-two.
Is there any advantage from your viewpoint of doing it either way besides the sticker shock?
Well, it's just staying complacent with the fair market value throughout, but, I mean, they've looked at it in the past, they've looked at it during in-house, they thought the cost upfront, well, that would be hurtful for the county. I can, and like I said, I think we should do it every four years. I'd say, we can't do it now. We're at two, we're too far along for the fourth year. We're too far along.
So what you're saying is we would have to pass this to six years this time?
Yeah. The time to have this discussion is.
If you did five, that would be a condition to.
Okay.
There there's so many things that has to be done. You have to take bids, you have to decide who's going to get the job.
So they're really having.
You do have to have certified appraisers.
Right.
Assessors to come in and do the job outside of the county.
Actually, so what you two are saying is there's no decision to be made here, it's just representative?
I'm just basically keeping us compliant with the code by bringing it out.
We have to make the request to this.
All right. So the request to extend it to years. Do I have a motion for that?
Summoned.
Do I have a second?
Sumed.
All right, everybody vote my way to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Stephanie, motion to Jeterston. Sorry.
Well, yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, buildings for that refund.
The refund request, I think, is in everybody's packet. It was basically a gentleman had planned on building a home, one property, and paid, I believe, for the building permit. Ran into some difficulties, decided not to build the home, I think, went to maybe a manufactured home route. Did get a permit for that, that's paid for, permits approved, so it's just that previous amount that he had paid is going to the refund request this one.
Okay, and it's just whether or not we're going to refund it for that?
Right.
Why did that, why did that come all the way to the board? Could that have been handled at lower level?
I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure if that needed board approval or what that it needs board approval.
In every, in every instance? Couldn't we?
It doesn't happen at all.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I've said it then.
It does seem like a magnitude amount to really bring the board.
So what you're, what you're saying, Mr., can we make it for future, just say, handle it locally?
Yeah, if we if we can handle it within that.
Under a certain amount?
Yeah. We think we can do that. What was the full number of this one?
It was eighty-seven.
What do you guys think? Two hundred bucks? If it's under two hundred bucks, you can handle it and do we?
Make two motions.
Okay. All right, first motion to approve the refund.
I'll make the motion to refund.
All right, Michelle makes the motion to refund. Dana Castile seconds. Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the second motion being any amount, are we authorized, or how would we phrase it, authorize the building official to refund?
Present it to the county administrator. To approve.
Okay, yeah, present it to the county administrator, and county administrator can approve refunds up to two hundred dollars. All right, do I have a motion to that?
Summoned.
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to opioid settlement.
Yeah, let me get that. I believe it's more of a, Ms. Kegley can touch on that a little bit, as far as just entering into like a new.
A new settlement.
New settlement, right. I kind of put in my memo what we were looking for with this. It would be approved, yes, on the Purdue Plan, to approve signing the release agreement, and then participation in new settlements with nine additional defendants. And I will just touch on, I have kind of been trying to get up to speed on the opioid settlement stuff, and kind of got a timeline on things that we need to get done to start spending some of that and to benefit the county. So work's being done, so, yeah, any money that we can get flowing through that can make a difference, I think.
Yeah, I I'd love to, I'm glad you're working on that, because that's the issue. We've got, what's it, around three hundred thousand dollars locked away, and we haven't been able to do anything.
Right.
But, all right, so do I need a separate motion for each of these?
I would.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve voting yes on the Purdue Plan.
Summoned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second motion is I need a motion to approve signing of the GESA release agreement. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One thing I'm gonna hope you're, hope you're worth the settlement.
A couple, hold on, we've got a little more.
I'm sorry.
Final, final one, approve participation, I need a motion to approve participation in new settlements with nine additional opioid defendants. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I brought to Ms. Kegley attention in the past year, a couple of instances when we run a list of time expiration to apply for opioid settlements, and I can't recall the details. Ms. Kegley, can you address that? I just know we, I brought. I just know we, I brought to your attention a couple times. Take a look at this, we're on the list, we haven't filed a claim yet.
Yeah. I think whenever you brought it up, the timeframe had already passed to do it. I'm not sure why it wasn't done, if it wasn't. But I can't, I can't speak to it. Sorry, county administrator. Previous county administrator.
But that's something, it seems like, now that you're focusing on it a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, and too, you know, we haven't really had an outlet for this money. So, you know, getting the money's all well and good, but we need to be able to spend it to make a difference for the citizens. So, yeah. All right. Moving on to the federal grant administration policy.
Yeah, I think this kind of comes from the auditors recommending that we adopt the guidelines for the administration of federal grants. And I think everybody has a draft policy in their packets, so I don't know if there was any questions on that.
Any questions or discussions?
I guess do we need a motion to pass second?
All right, a motion to approve this federal grant, grant administration policy.
Summoned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie moves. Michelle seconds. Everybody vote my way and say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion. Letters of support.
Yeah, that sample letters in your packets that I had received. We have, we historically supported EMS council. I did note that Roger Carter serves on the board on that organization. It seems like, you know, regionally, they do a lot of good work for us. And this is just coming up. They had to do a little bit of restructuring, so they just needed a new letter of support from us.
I'll make that motion that we send a letter of support.
I'll second that. All right, everybody vote my way and say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All right, look, keep it up.
Please accept D C J S Operation Cisfire Forensic Analytical Technology Grant with a total award amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and establish the following expense codes for office, I mean, police supplies and equipment additions and accept Virginia nine-one-one Services Board F Y twenty-six N G nine-one-one Additional Funding P S A grant with a total award amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and establish the following budget codes. Expenses for office supplies, supplies other furniture and fixture replacements, technology and hardware replacements, capital software replacements, and revenue code for miscellaneous nine-one-one grant funds received. And that's all of the grants.
Do I have a motion to establish these funds and move those funds in?
Summoned.
So Stephanie moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Danny seconds, I'll give Danny a second on this one. I'll vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All right. Appointments.
You have one appointment to the planning commission. You have one applicant, and that is Ashley Snodgrass, and she's been serving in that position.
I'll nominate Ms. Snodgrass.
I'll make a motion that nomination ceases and that the board votes by aggregation. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all. That's all for that? Sorry, it's a little bit, since we did one of us.
It's been a minute, but, yeah, that's it.
All right, building code appeals board, did we have anybody apply for that?
No.
All right, what applications? It looks like we've got a bunch for our county administrator here. All right, so I'll need a motion, I guess, to appoint county administrator, Mr. Josh Wilson, to regional industrial facilities board?
Summoned.
Second.
Second.
All right, Stephanie sec, or Stephanie moves and Mr. Jeeter seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right. All right, this one will be to appoint Mr. Josh Wilson to the Regional Improvement Committee. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Mr. Jeeter moves.
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. Everybody vote my way and say aye.
Aye.
Appoint Mr. Wilson to Community Criminal Justice Board. Have a motion for that?
Summoned.
Stephanie moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
And then finally, we're appointing Mr. Josh Wilson to Mount Empire Regional Business Committee Board. Do I have a motion for that?
Summoned.
Michelle moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All and vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I was getting done time to repeat that, so thanks so much. All right, county attorney's report. Ms. Kegley, do you have anything for us?
You all have my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to ask. I will ask for your authority to advertise, as I go through the General Assembly's actions this year, if we need to update any ordinances, particularly procurement, whether that would be next month or the next, could I have authority to advertise those? That would be routine. It's not discretion.
I'll make that motion that we give Ms. Kegley the authority to review that.
I'll second that. And everybody, everybody, everybody vote my way of saying aye. Thank you, Ms. Kegley. All right, county administrator for Mr. Josh Wilson. This is your first one?
Second.
Wow!
We snuck one in once, but maybe a little...
This is the first full one. First full one. About that.
Yeah, just on the claims, everybody's got their green sheets there. General fund balance, eight million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and eleven cents.
That's out of school.
You can see, yes. You can see comparison to previous years there on that graph. Early set claims for the month, we had four hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty thirteen cents. Total claims for the month, one million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for motion to pay the bills.
All right, do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, Michelle moves and Danny seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Still you.
Yeah, we'll just move on down to miscellaneous. Maybe we'll touch on the lawnmower at Keith Memorial first. They went out, was lucky enough to get an invite from Mr. Vickers to come out to the senior meeting. I guess that was last month. And was able to take a look at the lawnmower. I will say it has seen better days. Got quite the leak. I think it's leaking oil and stuff pretty regularly and some other things. But we are lucky enough to have that still work as we speak. Hopefully, I'll knock on some wood here. But if you have an update maybe on the mower that you wanted to say?
It's leaking oil around the head. And it's also pulling oil from time to time through the valves. Yesterday, we cut, fired it up. It looked like a tractor or truck loaded with a smoke around it. It was, and it did that one time today. It, you would almost think it would never run anymore. But I think it leaks a little oil depending on where the valves stop. And it don't take a whole lot to make a lot of smoke, but it's still running. We, we have problems with the deck falling down. There's a ratchet that catches it. And if that happens, I've got to go out there and have Kenneth get it up. I can give you a little idea of how much time. And you might say it's bragging, but it's fact. It's not. This weekend, I was out there Friday with a little league because they're going to have deep water for the slides, for the kids and stuff. And Friday I had to go out there. Saturday morning, I go out there, I've got to take off the lock we have on the faucet because we don't, the kids will turn the water on, and they're going to be paying a heck of a water bill. Sunday, I go back out there after they're done. I've got to put the lock back on because again, the kids will get in there. Last night, I was out there for two hours because some people from Lebanon. And let me say this about Brittany Robinson. She's helped the website immensely. We got a wedding only because the website is attractive. Some people in Lebanon saw it, so, but I was out there last night, two hours. Today, I've been down here, what, two and a half hours? And I, you know, I drive down here, I spend my money, my gas, and I look back and got some rough counts on how much volunteer time I do. It is probably in excess of two hundred fifty hours a year. That's only mine. That doesn't count sending in the people that take care of the building. That's a favor to the county, any way you look at it, what the people up there do. And the first lawnmower we bought, that was bought by volunteer money. It's lasted twenty-some years, and many of you have been on the board for a long time. And for the last three years, I've been saying, the lawnmower is in its life cycle. But I want to try to keep it running as long as I can. I've loaded it up from Nicholsville and took it to Cox Tractor for the last five, six, seven years. Before that, I was taking care of the maintenance on it. And every trip over there, there's two trips over there to go get it. So that's just a little bit of concept.
I appreciate it.
Now, the thing I think we need to do, Josh, you and I need to sit down and work out an agreement. We don't have a volunteer people to do all the stuff that we do up there. We'll continue to do some of it. But I'm involved in everything from a total link to booking a wedding. And it's a lot of effort, and all that goes into running this. And the county has a minimal investment for the amount of people that we have come to the park. I think we spent about maybe twenty-some thousand counting, the water, the electric bill and all. That's minimal. And the people it serves is the end target economic spectrum from a very low to the very high end. It's not a select bunch like some of the other parks in the county that target a more narrow bunch of people that spend a lot more money than we do at Keith Park. We take in about ten thousand dollars a year. We spent forty thousand dollars in the last three years. All that's gone back in the park. If I rent the building, I pay for it just like you would if you could have rented it.
And I know, I know, I appreciate it.
Nobody gets that building free except, except community service type stuff. So, so nobody, volunteers up there is getting any special privileges. But we can continue to operate the park to an extent. The bookings and all that kind of stuff we can do, I can help manage, but I have to have some resources in the county that we don't. We just don't have people that can do it anymore. We'll do the minor stuff. We'll take the money out of the budget and pay for it just like we did as we have the money. Right now, we don't have the money either. We've got some money in our budget. But when we went to the online booking, we grabbed a lot. We grabbed fifty-seven rentals real early. But that covers through December. So at the end of the year, we're not going to have our traditional end-of-year funding coming in because we already got it. So we got to cover all that. We've got some buildings we need to paint. We've got a hole in the park, a lot of property in effect, so if we have the money, we buy the lawnmower.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's my story, and I'll stick to it. Josh, I would like to sit down and kind of earn us some details about how we operate and try to smooth this out.
I'd like to do that.
I'd love to come down here, but I'd rather make this a little more smoother, bring it up in a public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, and I want to say that I appreciate everything that you do and all the other volunteers up there. It's certainly an asset to the county, and I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think everybody appreciates everything that you guys do there. Kind of circling back to the lawnmower, as I had Hannah said in my memo, unfortunately, looking at Parks and Rec budget, which is what this would come out of, there wasn't anything budgeted for this year by way of mower or even mowers that were asked for for the golf course. So that's kind of where we're at. Luckily, as I said, knock on wood, the mower is still operational. That could end today or tomorrow. But either way, I think we can make sure that we keep that mowed and keep that maintained because it is important to have that taken care of. Now, as far as, you know, mower quotes and stuff, I know you had worked on getting a quote on a mower. I know Derek France had worked on getting a couple quotes from a vendor, and he may be still working on getting some other quotes. So kind of where we're at now, I guess, you know, with the money not budgeted for, I guess we would be just stuck with, hopefully, the mower continues to operate. I know Scott Services did say that they could try to help out if it did get down and just to keep that mowed. Now, you know, scheduling wise, you know, try to get that taken care of. But the most important thing is it will keep getting mowed and maintained there, one way or the other. You know, if there was other monies or anything that the board would want to, you know, try to help out with, I don't know. But as far as where it's allocated, where it comes from, which is Parks and Rec, we don't have anything to do with, help out with this year.
Could I ask, did Chris, or you look into the capital improvement money that they have already in the budget? Could we pull some from that? I don't understand how that money is used.
Right.
It was quite a bit, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and I don't know if that, what that all necessarily can be used for, or where that comes from. I'm assuming, I don't know if maybe the, does the county put in for that?
Do you know how much is in there?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The capital, capital improvement money?
The capital improvement is nineteen thousand.
Now, they don't, I think that...
That money, we want to hold for capital improvements, not for operations.
That's what I want to...
Yep, that's exactly right.
That won't fall under capital improvement?
It's a little over nineteen thousand.
Is that what we've got, Amy?
It's in a separate fund from leftover from Keith. When that money was donated, it's a different budget.
That was established with grant money and personal money. Right. So it was what, when they started building the park, it was some money that they had from personal money and probably C R Keith. And that was held back, there was thirty-some thousand at one time. We took about twelve of that about three, four, five years ago and put on the extension to the concession stand up there. Right now, we're looking at trying, we're going to have to do something about the playground equipment. So kind of holding that money back so if we have to match a grant somewhere, it's not going to come close to matching a grant for playground equipment because that's going to be a quarter mega dollars probably. That's kind of what we're holding back for if we had a capital improvement. If we're going to spend that on operations, it's gone. And then we'd be down here asking for something else down the road.
I think money is reserved for actual physical playing, right?
Right.
Or it's reserved for actual physical playing?
That's exactly right, yes.
And the others, operation?
Not operational funds. Two different ballgames, capital and operation.
I think this is a unique partnership, which has worked well for many years. Probably the most successful park in the county due to your efforts.
It has worked very well back, what, several years ago, suddenly drafted an agreement between the county... It has worked very well back, what, several years ago, Sally, we drafted an agreement between the county and the, and the park. And we also drafted an agreement between the, uh, uh, high school baseball field and the Little League people. And all that's worked very well for the last few years.
I would like to make a motion that, once the discussions are complete, if anybody else wants to weigh in.
I'm gonna make a motion that we take six thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents out of supervisor's contingency fund and buy the mower.
I'll speak in that. All right. Mr. Jeter Mudds? Mr. Brittany Sanders? And, uh-
That was a low bid, by the way, from Meat Tractor.
Okay.
The high bid was seventy-five hundred from Cox Ford.
I'm a firm believer that first impressions is everything, so when you drive by there and you see it, it's, it's well kept. It's beautiful.
I can't hear good.
I said, I'm a firm believer that first impressions is everything, so when you drive by there, you see it, it's beautiful, you know, and to have a lawnmower to go down on you and not be able to do that, I mean-
I, I guess it's a little emotional aggravating, as much as anything.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, if you deal with it on a day-to-day basis, something happened to it almost every week, and the choker stuff. So I gotta jump in the truck and go out and help get this, 'cause one person can't get it loose. And it's just, it's small stuff, and, but anyway.
Yeah, and everybody-
But we're trying to keep it looking like a money.
You do, it looks, it's beautiful up there. It really is.
Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
What, what, what's that, the spirit of hell, does that mean it, it recent?
Yeah, it's recent.
It's recent.
'Cause that was a pretty specific number, you know, there's no wiggle room in that.
That number has been, wait a minute, no, that, that number has been out for, I got a, I got a, a quote from Cox, and I sent that, I think I copied Bill on it, uh, for seventy-two hundred dollars, that was a trade. Cox didn't give us a government discount. Uh, and, um, I thought we was gonna get some more quotes from Meat and stuff, we didn't get that. So I made a call to Meat Tractor, and it sells them a perk, giving me a government discount. Well, I talked to Derek, and Derek said, he knew the vice president of Meat Tractor, he said, I'll call him. And Derek went and got the meat, the one I got was a ballpark sixty-eight hundred. And Derek made, uh, a call to, to him, his buddy up there, and he got, he come in and, what, I sent you the memo.
Sixty-six, fifty-seven, seventy-five.
Yeah, sixty-six, yeah, hundred dollars, so.
I'm just saying, if I wanna round that up.
Is there any more out there? But, but folks, we've been messing with this, we've been, Bill, you wait a minute. We've been messing with this for four weeks. It's unacceptable to not have some sort of a nature. I mean, either yes or no, but you need an answer.
That's what we're fixing to get, Larry.
We're about to get that for you.
Do you wanna round that up to sixty-seven hundred, like Bill's suggestion? And then we can, yeah, I would just round it up, make sure that you have enough. That way, you know, we go back to Meat or whatever, whoever wins the bid, that we make sure we have. You wanna reiterate that?
Yeah, let's just-
Sixty-seven hundred, yes.
All right.
That's the best figure we've got right now, sixty-seven hundred.
Everybody vote my way of saying aye?
Aye.
Pose.
Go get your mower, Larry.
Go get your mower, go get your mower.
Now, Josh, I'll call you.
Yeah, I'll sit on me.
Couple hours, and maybe go through and rework with Sally, might pull that document out, just review it, and see if there's anything we need to, to update on it. 'Cause I, 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 we wanna work with you, that's, that's absolutely what we wanna do. But I guess I have expectations and maybe push the, push the limit a little bit, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Have a good day.
So I've got a few other things, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to touch on, to circle back from last meeting, about Terry Kilgore and Todd Pillion. I did reach out to both of their offices, um, however, I haven't heard back anything yet. I will, uh, stay on that, and, uh, maybe work through, uh, Leno Wisco a little bit, 'cause, um, I wanted to try to get meetings set with both of them, to introduce myself as well. And then, uh, we'll kinda circle back to that and try to get them, uh, meetings set up with you guys. So, ongoing on that, um, a couple other things that I wanted to touch on, I, I guess, I wanted to highlight some work that, uh, litter control has done, um, uh, one, uh, case in particular um, that Stacy did get a conviction on, a few highlights on that. Um, there was an initial complaint made back in December of twenty-four, um, on this. Um, he had set up, uh, some cameras, I think right away, just into January. Um, those cameras didn't quite work right, um, for what he needed. He ended up, uh, using some budgeted funds to get a license plate reader camera put in. And then, all in all, with all the cameras, um, and what he had done, um, he had, this is a crazy number, two hundred, over two hundred and thirty thousand images and video clips he collected from January to April. Um, and that was with four to six cameras, that's, seems to be a lot of, lot of photos and stuff to go through. But, uh, he made, uh, you know, over two dozen visits, um, to the site. Um, I think he had, uh, spent several early mornings, um, out there, to, um, camped out, uh, looking for the person, and, uh, finally did, uh, catch him, and had enough evidence to take to court and get a conviction. So that's just one example of the work that he and, uh, and Jake are putting in. They, they actually got a conviction. They did, yeah. I remember we talked about that earlier this month, it was just a-
Do you know if that was publicized in the paper?
Uh, I guess I don't, it probably, yeah, it will be.
I think we need more of it.
Yeah.
Publicized.
Right.
That's a good, good thing.
And that's why, you know, when this, uh, Bill had brought this to my attention, I wanted to make sure that, uh, brought that in front of the board and the public, uh, to highlight the work that they do.
He's working currently on five cases, by now.
So that tag reader, does that just automatically classify, tell you if it's in St. Louis, Virginia, or?
Oh, you're talking about the cameras that the-
Yeah. The plate reader just kind of, if, uh, I understand it right, kinda highlights in on that plate, and then gives a clear image of that as they come in.
Right, and you can put that plate into the system, and it can tell you how often that plate is coming into.
Oh, my.
Wonder if there's any collaboration with Sheriff's Department?
Sheriff's Office called me, uh, yesterday, was asking about cameras, if we had cameras to report back more because of the scavenging situation. Unfortunately, we don't, we just have five sites that have cameras. But, yeah, they're, they're, they're looking too, and-
So, remember, we were-
Right.
Yeah, there was a complaint that came through the other day on one of the trash sites, um, about, uh, I think it was an illegal dumping, actually was the complaint, and then, uh, it came through. Uh, Bill and Stacy pulled up the cameras and actually found a scavenger, two, during that same timeframe. So gave him, he was expecting one to maybe pursue, and ended up getting two. But, uh, yeah, there's good work being done there.
Good job, Stacy.
Um, we also met with AEP, um, I know that was mentioned earlier, um, last month, and, uh, just wanted to highlight a few things. Um, he had touched on some possible, um, uh, legislation that could make some changes, but, um, I mostly wanted to just touch on the customer assistance programs that he had, uh, highlighted. Uh, one being the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, uh, says in twenty-twenty-four, Appalachian Power helped nearly thirty thousand Virginia customers access that program. And, uh, they continue working with groups of the federal government to maintain funding for that. Um, there's payment extensions and payment arrangements, um, that, uh, you can explore, and it looks like you can go on their website to find out a little bit more about that, appalachianpower.com/assist. Um, there's average monthly plan option, um, it's a little bit different from the former, like, the budget plan. It spreads the cost of heating and cooling over the entire year, which means customers pay roughly the same amount during the winter and summer as they pay the remainder of the year. Again, that's, uh, more info on their website. And then, uh, PIP, I won't touch on that, uh, we got, uh, um, presented that earlier. There's Neighbor to Neighbor Bill Pay Assistance, um, and that's, again, their website, you can find that, and then Energy Efficiency Programs. He did provide us some, um, posters, um, just one-pagers that, uh, we can have available if anybody wants to stop by, um, the office, we can do that, otherwise, uh, yeah, right on appalachianpower.com, I think slash assist, gives them, a lot of those programs.
Can you put any of that information on our website?
I'm sure we could probably put some links or something in there for them. Yeah, I think we have an assistance section. And then the only other thing I guess I wanted to touch on was, uh, I'm sure, uh, everyone kinda saw, um, the mountaintop restitution, um, article in the, uh, paper. Um, the county, there will be, uh, a payment, there was, as stated in the paper, it's like twenty-five thousand dollars restitution, um, coming back. Out of that, actually, to get a more accurate number, um, as far as what we could, can expect, um, to my knowledge, it hasn't hit our account yet. Uh, the way the court does it, they batch their restitution payments, I believe, um, like, once a month or something. So it'll be coming early this month sometime, but we're right around eighteen thousand is what would be coming in. Uh, I know, uh, just to kinda get ahead of it, um, what it bore action previously for a payment that came through was to send that, uh, EDA's way. Um, out of that, that did get sent over to the EDA, um, a portion of that, Sally, you remember, there's like forty-seven percent of that went to the Department of Ag to help pay them back. They have said that they expect, um, any future payments that we would receive, that they would get, um, that similar percentage sent back to them, to try to make them as whole as they can be on-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, did we have an agreement to that effect, that they are first on the list?
So as far as, uh, my understanding is, it's basically just us and them left, is that right, Sally? 'Cause, um, tobacco was, uh, paid off, and that's why we're, I guess, collecting that back to try to reimburse ourselves, 'cause we made them whole, um, or as whole as we can make them. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's just, would be just the two of us left.
I don't see why they're getting the money when we paid two hundred and fifty thousand back.
Well, Department of Ag paid a lot in for the program too, um.
But was there an agreement to reimburse them first?
As far as I, I don't know-
It's an agreement to reimburse?
Yeah.
I mean-
With there only being two of us left, you know, it's- And two, that's called up the Department of Ag, if we need money from them, that's gonna be on a mark on the county, if they've already got it.
Well, that still leaves, uh, a balance. I think you paid, uh, twenty-five thousand on the, uh, to the Ag Department, and the payment was, uh, fifty-six thousand total. So it still leaves twenty-five thousand, which is sitting now with the EDA, and that's my concern.
Right, so the, like I said, the board, previous board of action sent that to the EDA in hopes that that would help, um, you know, foster, um, growth within the county. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Kilgore is working, um, on, um, project that, uh, would utilize those funds. It would be, basically what it is, is when, uh, whether it's EDA or, or another organization within the county goes out for a grant, um, a lot of times you need matching funds for that, and that's what that would be most likely used for, is to help with that. And, you know, kinda going back to what this, you know, eighteen thousand, whatever, change, um, that will be coming in, kinda precedent set to send that EDA's way so it can be used. Um, I guess that would kinda be the hopes, uh, once this does come in, that that would go same route as the previous restitution payment.
Well, I do have a concern with that. Uh, I don't have a problem if there's a need, yet, come to the board and say, I need some money. I just don't like funneling money to EDA. We're not seeing a lot of success in the last twenty years with projects. And I can't see continuing to have a slush fund for potential prospects. I would prefer that come back through this board, a special request, to find any special project that he's pursuing.
I think the, the, one concern with that would be just the delay, um, you know, when these organizations go out for grants, um, to apply for it, they would miss, they would need to know that those funds are available. Um, you know, and if the EDA already has that, they can, he can push that through his board to allocate that, those funds.
I, I would like, I would like to make a motion that all future funds come first to the board supervisors, and then redirect it. I know we did, there's something kinda like that on this first grant, but I would rather see more discussion with this board prior to redirecting those funds in the future, I'm making that motion, is what I'm saying.
I'll second him.
I'm sorry, I don't have enough information for what you're talking about right there.
What are you talking about?
You're talking about all funds, or are you specifically talking about this?
The restitution payments.
I know.
So you're just asking for, like, when we actually get the funds into the bank account, that then we would bring that up to the board?
Yes.
On where, where it goes?
Yes.
Isn't that what we're doing? Well, right, this, this hasn't, to my knowledge, it may have hit this morning, but I don't believe this has hit our bank account yet. But it is pending, uh, it's been approved, um, I called clerk's office, they, uh, it's coming our way this month. So that's, I mean, we could be proactive, I guess, in allocating this payment, um, somewhere, or, I guess, we would wait till next month. Are you talking about cutting out the Department of Ag as well?
I think a nice discussion.
You wanna cut out, you wanna, okay. I don't understand that part, where you're coming from.
As far as, what's that? I'll be glad to try to answer it, if you have, what's your question?
I think she's wondering, oh, hey, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, how, what advantage it is for us to keep money from the Department of Ag if they think that they're entitled to it?
Well, that's the first I'd heard about that, when we first became, I wasn't aware of that agreement. And I, I don't know that there's an agreement now. Sally, would you, are you familiar with that agreement?
There were agreements in place to get those funds from those organizations, it's like the Tobacco Commission. And they held the EDA responsible if the company didn't produce and then didn't pay back. And so we had to pay the Tobacco Commission back, based on that agreement. This Department of Ag is the same way, based on that agreement, that any money that we would be getting in this highly unique situation that we're getting restitution from a company that defrauded the county and the EDA. You know, there's not a specific agreement addressing that, but our obligation is to the Department of Ag to pay back what we can, of what we get back.
I haven't, I haven't had to do the good, I'm not too much right, yeah.
Well, so, so essentially, I wanna make sure I, I understand this wrong, but you're essentially saying that we just have a discussion every time we get restitution payment?
Yes.
How is that different than what happens now?
So I think you said that you wanted to direct it to the EDA, direct it coming back to the EDA.
That would be my recommendation.
Yep, and I say I disagree with that.
So the motion would be- Well, we are having a discussion about it, right? That, that's what I, I don't understand, we're voting to have a discussion, and we're already having a discussion.
Yeah, but he's saying going forward, the money will be directed to the EDA, once it hits the bank.
Why would we have different discussions on different, it's the same, it's gonna be the same?
Well, there was nothing fixed, I think Mr. Kilgore made a-
I mean, we're having this discussion.
They had a discussion with the Ag- They had a discussion with the Agriculture Department on the amount. It wasn't anything fixed as far as an agreement, we get a certain percentage of any refunds. I think Mr. Kilgore said he did a good job in negotiating, was able to owe it at twenty-five, if they wanted more, and he owed it at twenty-five.
Right.
Is that kind of your understanding?
They were the, maybe the south end of that fifty percent, yeah.
So, and two, you, and you're saying that all future funds for restitution would go...
That would be my recommendation to follow the precedent set from the previous restitution payment.
But there's nothing saying that we have to do.
No, no, just a recommendation.
So, essentially, your motion is to have a discussion when we get this in, which we're gonna have anyways?
Yes. Your recommendation was directed to the...
Right, your motion basically says that every time a, a payment would come in, we would have this discussion.
Have some oversight, yeah, have some oversight on it.
Did Department of Ag pay any money back like the county had to?
They were out the money that they put in, right?
Yeah, they're completely out.
They're out, that's what they're, we're trying to...
I'm saying, oh, did they pay any money back like we paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back during this deal? Did the Department of Ag pay any back?
You mean to the Tobacco Commission?
To whoever the...
They were a thunder like the Tobacco Commission was.
They held them.
They're...
We, we paid the...
Just like the Tobacco Commission, but we chose the Tobacco Commission to pay back and not Department of Ag.
I mean, we're gonna discuss it every time we get it, right? So why do we need a motion to talk about it?
No, that's, Mr. Wilson said that, that he wanted, he recommended directing it from our bank account to the EDA without any discussion.
Discuss, I mean, but we're gonna talk about it.
He doesn't have any authority.
I don't have a vote. The motion, I think, on the table was, uh, just to discuss each time the restitution comes through, right?
How often are we gonna see that restitution? Is that gonna be a monthly discussion?
Well, um, it would probably be a little bit longer than next time, but, yeah, it would be a monthly, I think, to follow what the, maybe the agreement, or at least our understanding of the agreement, it would be a monthly discussion, yeah.
All right, so, instead of that, can we, can we present, I don't know...
Is that kind of like the refund?
Yeah.
That we just did, I mean...
Could we make a plan that we adhere to instead of discussing every five thousand dollars that come in? Because it was gonna be like five thousand dollars.
Right.
I'm confused, because last time you voted, Eddie, you were...
And I mightn't say, I didn't fully, I didn't, I didn't fully understand what it was.
But you voted to put that money to the EDA. You voted to put that money, as we all did.
But I think there's a party missing in all this discussion, and that's the taxpayers that we represent. And I think we're here to represent their interest, not the Ag Department. And I know they're a partner, Ag.
Who funds the Ag Department, though?
The taxpayer.
And so we're, we're putting money out of one hand and just the other?
I'd just like to have a little more oversight on the money.
Sure, let's have a discussion next time.
Yep.
All right, so, what, what exactly is your motion?
Well, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, that's, uh...
And it isn't to restitution?
The motion is to any restitution payments be counted before the board with some discussion about distribution.
But that's already been done.
And then it's kind of got to be...
I think you recommend it go directly to, or we're gonna vote on that.
Yes, we need to vote on that, don't we not?
We can. Someone would have to, so, motion on the table, I think, would have to, I don't know, would that just have to die on the table, or with no vote?
They just need to vote.
Need to vote on that?
You might want to say in the motion, restitution with the Mountain Top, uh, project.
Yeah, let's say restitution with the Mountain Top Project, discuss planning, or discuss payments.
So, you're dispersing?
Distribution. Dispersion, yeah, dispersion, I like that. Okay. Uh, each time they come through.
And that's opposed to you go over yours again?
Yeah, my recommendation would be, um, that going off the previous board action, directing those funds to be sent to the EDA, with also out of those, the EDA then reimbursing, um, a percentage of that to Department of Ag each time these payments come through, that it would go, go to the EDA, the EDA would, uh, take a portion of those funds and send them to the Department of Ag, and that that would be the arrangement, uh, moving forward with these Mountain Top restitution funds.
So I think basically the difference in our position, uh, who has oversight? Does the board have oversight of the restitution, or does it EDA? And your plan, it's EDA, and what I've suggested, it's the board.
And the EDA board would have to vote on it, use some of their funds, right?
Correct.
So in a way, we are ultimately responsible for that.
And again, we are responsible to the taxpayer in that sense as well. It's the same thing. It's either you give authority to the EDA board or you don't.
Well, let's go ahead with this, so are you still presenting that motion, Danny, you're still second in?
Right.
All in favor of examining and, uh, discussing each individual distribution payment, uh, for the restitution of the Mountain Top on project, uh...
Mountain Timber.
Mountain Top Timber, uh, project be discussed?
Yes.
Do a show of hands.
And can we have a show of hands for? Can we have a show of hands against?
So, was that in favor of what he's suggesting?
No, that's just in, that's just to say that your vote did not go through. Now we're gonna do a vote.
So there'd have to be, someone have to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we proceed with the previous board...
The precedent.
Precedent that we give the money to...
EDA to disperse.
EDA to disperse. In accordance with the restitution payments.
Do we want to put a cap on that? Would there be any sense of that?
No. No.
I'll speak on that.
I don't guess that, and the reason I am is because we end up paying all the bills, and all the money goes to EDA, and they don't pay no bills, so...
Say it like you does.
That's, that's not right. We just want to pay that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out, but you give it to EDA to do whatever they want to with it, and that's not right.
I don't think they're gonna do whatever they want to with it, though. I think they're gonna take, they need to take, they'll take that money and pay that.
Any property they sell or anything, we pay for the property, they sell it, and then the county gets left out. You're not thinking straight.
Do we want to tackle this discussion till next meeting, so that we can get a little bit more clarity?
I think we tackle it once.
There's a motion.
Yeah.
And a second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah.
For the distribution of the funds as we have set precedent.
Right, it would be, any future Mountain Top restitution payments would be directed to the EDA, um, with the EDA then, um, paying a percentage of that to the Department of Ag, um, as those come in.
And then what happens to the rest of the money?
So the EDA will have to be used for, for economic development.
That's why I was asking if there wanted, if we wanted to be a cap, if you want to cap it at a hundred thousand dollars, or...
What do we think?
You're gonna give all the money to the EDA, but as far as this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the county, taxpayers paid out.
Zero.
We're not gonna get anything back.
What is the amount, the amount, like, four thousand?
Yeah, it was four or five, but what we'll actually see, I don't know, it's gonna be minimal.